To order the regular meeting of the Rock Ridge School Board. And I will invite everyone to stand and sign a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just want to remind everyone to turn your phones or your communication devices either off or on silent. There's a binder labeled "Public Copy of Board Materials" that everyone probably saw when you entered the boardroom. Meeting agendas are available at the table at the side of the room. They may also be accessed online by going to RRPS.org/DistrictInformations/SchoolBoard/BoardBook. At this time, I will conduct a roll call. Director Riordan.
President.
Director Schoberg.
Here.
Director Tanrow.
Here.
Director Lotteger.
Here.
Director Addy.
Here.
Director Yohan.
Here.
Director Anderson.
Here.
Director Sorkin.
Here.
And Director Sundquist is present. We have all of our board members present tonight. Agenda item two is approval of the agenda. I would entertain a motion to either adopt the agenda as presented or to amend it.
So moved to adopt the agenda.
Madam Chair, I would like to add for discussion and possible consideration, 5.1.1, that's just to discuss the purchase agreement presented to us.
There is a motion on the table.
There is a motion on the table to adopt the agenda as presented.
It hasn't been seconded yet.
I would second Director Schoberg's motion.
Motion is seconded. Any further discussion?
But Bill jumped in before it was seconded, and he wants to make... If he doesn't make an amendment to that motion, I will, because I have another amendment to make to the agenda.
Well, we've got a motion on the table. That was seconded. We can vote on that, and then we'll move forward.
No, we can make an amendment to that.
When would we...
It's up to him to make the amendment.
Director Sundquist.
The amendment would materially change, or if it doesn't materially change my motion, I would be happy to accept it.
Where are additions and deletions?
Yeah, I just asked.
Agenda additions and deletions, it's the same effect.
Where would we add? Where would we add? Add something to the agenda or delete something from the agenda?
We don't have to spell everything out.
Well, we always had additions or deletions, and then we have the...
This is... There's a motion. Okay, I'm running the meeting. There's a motion. There's support. Does he want to amend it?
I will make an amendment. I am allowed to make an amendment to that motion.
Not if it materially changes my amendment, my motion. And it would be up to me to say yes or no.
I think you're mistaken, and we need to have...
Well, here's where we're at. I, as the chair, am running the meeting. Mr. Director Schoberg is not willing to amend his motion. So we can vote. If his motion fails, then a new motion can be brought to the table.
I may be willing to amend it if I hear it, but it's my choice.
Do you want to let Ms. Director Sorkin know what... or Director Schoberg know what the amendment would be?
First of all, I'm asking, where do we have additions and deletions to the agenda?
Okay, that's not what we're discussing. Do you have a motion amendment that you would like to suggest to Director?
I'm not going to fall into that trap because we're not following proper procedure here.
Here's how the procedure works.
We always had additions and deletions to the agenda.
Well, it's not on there today. I am running the meeting.
Why isn't it?
It's not on there today, Director Sorkin. I am running the meeting. I am asking you, as Director Schoberg has asked, do you have a suggested amendment to his motion?
You know, Bill jumped in, so Bill has an amendment, and I have an amendment.
I'm not discussing that. I'm asking if you have a suggested amendment to...
I do. Bill, do you have a suggested amendment?
Nope. I want to know what your suggested amendment is to Director Schoberg's motion.
My amendment is to, first of all, 5.1. Bill talked about having 5.1.1 about this purchase agreement that was received before the board packet went out. And I would like to have that 5.1, the purchase agreement, come before, consider approval of the manual arts demo, because it does not make sense to pass a motion and approve a contract to demo something before we talk about and receive a purchase offer. It's backwards. And that's the same thing that happened the last meeting? We had...
No, this is off-topic. We're just talking about an amendment to the motion. And I believe, and Stacy, as a point of clarification, did the purchase agreement come in after the board book was published?
Came in before the board thing...
No, I'm not asking you, Director.
Before the...
Director, I'm not asking you. The board book was published? Yes. So that's where we're at. Are you willing to entertain that amendment?
No.
So we have a motion on the floor. We've had discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign?
No.
Motion carries six to one.
I will get a legal opinion on that.
Okay, I look forward to that.
So we are not adding this purchase agreement then?
We're not. At this point, I would recognize visitors and visitor input, and we have had people that have contacted us. I would invite those that are coming to speak to come up to the podium and identify yourself to the record. And the first person on the visitor input is Donna Pettenelli. Sir Donna Pettenelli?
Hi, I'm Donna Pettenelli. And I live in the school board district from Rock Ridge. And I have a five-year-old, so...
Ms. Pettenelli, can you speak up a little bit?
Our turn.
I think the microphone is just for recording purposes and not for amplifying, so you might just have to speak a little louder.
Okay, so don't mind if I yell at you. Sorry. So I live in the district, and I have a five-year-old that I'm deciding on whether I'm going to enroll or not. So there are several factors I have when... I have to weigh when making the decision to send my child to Rock Ridge or not. So I came to the last board meeting to see how things were going. I have no doubt that this facility will exceed all my expectations. Looking at the plans and models, it is quite incredible. But a building does not make a good school. And actions of the faculty follow your leadership. I would have loved to say that it felt like the board had the children's best interest in mind, but that wasn't the case. Instead, there were condescending comments and questions left unanswered and unasked. And I'm curious as how it would have gone if there was not an audience. On my list of concerns is CRT, sexual education, and let's not forget the psychological warfare being made of the COVID response. Do you know if you hear something enough times that you will start to believe it? If you keep telling a person or a child that they are bad, a racist, privileged, or oppressed, or pointing out flaws, whether these flaws are real or not, they will start to believe it. CRT holds that the most important thing about you is the color of your skin, not your character, not your behavior, not your values, and not your achievements. CRT undermines the very foundation of the Constitution and what Martin Luther King Jr. spoke for. CRT assumes that racism is everywhere and always present. Is that true? Allowing this into our schools is irresponsible. Allowing these theories to manipulate and condition the minds of innocent children is nothing short of criminal. You, as a school board, are responsible for these innocent lives. You have an opportunity to protect our children from being taught these damaging theories in our schools. I am praying for each and every one of you that you will do what's best for our children. In closing, I'm going to quote Luke 17:2. "It would be better for them to be thrown in the sea with a millstone tied around their neck than to cause one of these little ones to stumble." So watch yourselves.
If we don't keep the work of the board, and if we got pooping and hollering and that sort of things, we will end visitor input, and no more. I will just say this meeting is for the business of the board, and we will take a recess until we can have order restored.
This meeting is for our children.
This is order. Freedom of speech. This is order. What are you talking about?
This doesn't work for us.
That's right.
These are our children.
I will take... I'm going to give you a minute.
They work for themselves.
And if you can't contain yourselves, we'll recess until you can.
I think somebody needs control... You as well, about controls.
Okay, you know what? I'm going to call a recess for 10 minutes. And the board, we can come back.
We'll be here.
We'll be here.
Constitution here. Freedom of speech.
It is a public meeting. But we have order. We have order.
Is there a deputy chair?
All right, we are back from our recess. I'm calling the meeting back to order. Next up on the agenda is Ms. Catherine Districhoff speaking about the 3D virtual reality of school buildings and the demo bid.
Okay, thank you. Um, it's kind of intimidating lots of people. So first, I would like to address that I think that the board should not accept the demolition bid for the manual training arts building for the following reasons. First of all, it has not been approved by SHPO, S-H-P-O. And both of the three people, Sarah Beamer, Amy Spog, Kelly Greg Johnson, were out of the office, and I had gotten a reply from them on Saturday. That needs to be arranged prior, as well as an EAW, before you can actually approve the bid. And so if you approve the bid tonight, you will be actually violating state statutes and laws that I'm aware of, and that's according to them. And I have emails to back that up. Second, that's tied into demolition. The Abiloth Heritage Historic Society did not get to get any items out of the demolition out of the junior high. And I feel that that is a travesty. And they had contacted weeks in advance, Charles Anderson. They only got three items out of the building, and there wasn't any salvage done. And I feel that's very not acceptable. And I would like to see that not happen at other... at other... on any of the other school buildings. Third, in regards to that, I've been trying to get ahold of Noel Schmidt since July 16th regarding these buildings and regarding taking pictures of the buildings. And I have left four voicemail messages and two emails, and I have received no response. And that's been over 11 days. And in most jobs, if you do not get a response within 11 days, you'd get some type of penalty or termination. Third, I... So that's regarding the demolition. And also with regards to some... The school board needs to... The demolition of the junior high and the manual training, a lot of people came through, and it was the heart of the community. And both of those buildings are the heart of the community. I can't tell you how many people had many different stories and shared with them. And you... The school board took that away from people. And the children learned from that history. And then... So with any other buildings, I suggest doing... So a 3D photo is basically where it's a three-dimensional, so it's like virtual reality. And basically then, once the buildings... If the building has to be demoed or isn't there, you still can go through that building. I did it for Miners Memorial and for the other building. I prefer to do it with... when the items aren't removed. So I would like this done. Second, I would like to say that I'd like to delay the sales with regards to the photos and everything in the buildings to allow people to go through them again, to go down memory lane, and also to be able to do these photos of these schools before that is done. I think that you owe that to the school or owe that to the general public to be able to have that. And like I said, these 3D imagings, there's different companies that do it, and it's very nice, and it's always there. And like I said, that should be occurred before the buildings are emptied out of the art or other things that go along with the sale. So again, I'm against the sale happening so early until the buildings are actually going to be vacated. Third... Or second, I'm against the demolition of the bid, and I've told you those reasons. And lastly, I would like to say that there needs to be a deadline for adding items to the school board agenda. In regards to the purchase offer, I think that that's a travesty, that that is not on tonight's agenda, especially when you're accepting the decision to demo a building. And we ran into that on the last building where you already had approved the demo, but you were still... It was still listed for sale. So you're not in any hurry to demo these buildings. You know, you still have two years or more that you could demo them with regards to the referendum. So those are my final things. Like I said, and I've tried to get the 3D imaging on the actual agenda. And Stacy, I never heard back from you. What's the proper procedures? Because a lot have changed about getting it on the agenda. But I think it's a topic that should be addressed to keep those memories. And like I said, the fact that nobody was allowed in that building, including the Abiloth Heritage Society, into the junior... The old junior high, which is now being demoed, is a travesty. And to get any items out of there, Vite won't sell them. And you can't even get... Even though it's public, they won't even tell you where they're taking them so that you can try and get them from the second buyers. So I think that's a travesty, and it should not occur. And the school board and the superintendent are responsible for not having any of those items, including a bell or any of the signs that were on the buildings, the Chigami signs or the AOA signs. Yeah, that is... That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Districhoff.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Thomas Walton to discuss the COVID and the upcoming school year. And just a reminder, everyone has three minutes.
Tom Walton from Abiloth. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Good. Forty-seven studies have confirmed the ineffectiveness of masks for COVID-19. And 32 more studies have confirmed their negative health effects. Young children being forced to wear masks is of particular concern, things like bacterial meningitis, et cetera. A California parents group sues Governor Newsom over COVID mask mandates for schools. I doubt just governors can be sued. The University of Florida discovers numerous disease-causing bacteria in children's masks. I want you people to show me one peer-reviewed study that shows paper and cloth masks are effective at stopping the spread of COVID. Just one. A Kentucky judge rules that Governor Beshear's COVID mask orders unconstitutional. And one thing you will absorb even on the first listen to this is the injections supplied by Moderna and Pfizer are not vaccines. They are an experimental drug that alters your DNA. And why is the CDC quietly abandoning the PCR test? And why is Inova Medical Group recalling their unauthorized SARS-2 antigen rapid quality tests because of the risk of false tests? And you know how to tell when public health authorities are lying? Their own data. Alex Berensen. COVID-19 Program Director Admits Injection Destroys Immune System. America's frontline doctors filed a motion seeking immediate injunctive relief in Alabama federal court to stop emergency youth authorization of experimental COVID-19 injections for three groups of Americans. AFLDS files complaint to halt COVID vaccine in college students with immunity. Eminent European physicians and scientists this month co-authored an expert statement regarding COVID mRNA vaccine for children outlining their experted opinions that vaccination of adolescents for COVID-19 is unnecessary. Claims demonstrating efficacy are misleading, and the safety profiles are catastrophic.
Thank you, Mr. Walton.
My three minutes are up?
It is, yes.
Who's running the timer?
I did. Just like I'm running the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Walton.
One question. Is the board going to take the effort and time to educate yourselves before you accept some edict from a potentate through his minions, which may very well not be based on science but on fear and arrogance? And I have all the links.
Next, we have Teri Radke to talk about critical race theory.
Thank you for letting me speak. Three minutes is really hard. My name is Teri Radke. I am a mom. I'm a grandma and a taxpayer in this district. And I've been increasingly concerned over the last couple of years about this thing called critical race theory. And I saw it was on the agenda, and I thought, you know, maybe I need to speak up. I am by no means an expert, but I have done a lot of research on it. Critical race is an ideology with Marxist background. Their end goal is to divide and conquer us. CRT is also known as equity, social justice, diversity and inclusion, culturally responsive teaching. Equity is not equality. Equity is a material outcome where everyone ends up being the same. That sounds like socialism. Equality is, as stated in our Declaration of Independence, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal and are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights." And among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. You don't fight racism with racism. We know that. You teach people that we have equal rights because our Creator made us in His image and gave them to us. We do not get our rights from government or superintendents or school boards. We get our rights from our Creator. America has this as its foundation. And we have fought wars, and we have lost many of our people to secure these liberties. The Civil War, Equal Rights Protection Clause of the Fourteenth Amendment, the Civil Rights Act, the Voting Act, Voting Rights Act, our First Amendment rights. And even at the local level, we have bullying policies in our student handbooks, right? And you teachers are taught that. It's available to everybody who goes to school here. CRT is an attack on our institutions, on our children, and on our families. It inflames division. CRT focuses on color. It makes color the issue. Whites are the oppressors. The colored are the oppressed. They don't judge people on character as Martin Luther King Jr. encouraged us to do, but rather on their color. We are all one race. God created all men of one blood to dwell on the face of the earth. I have a mixed family personally. And I tell my grandkids that the same blood that's running through their veins is the same color as my blood. They just have more melanin in their skin. And the DNA tests that are popular nowadays are showing that. We're all related. America is a melting pot of races. We're all related. So the outcome, how does this look for a mixed family? My mixed family. White dad is bad and mean and an oppressor. And mom is oppressed, and she can't make better decisions because she's been a wrestler her whole life. And, oh my gosh, what are these kids going to think about their parents? Think about it on a practical level. This is bizarre. It's dangerous and divisive to families. It's a lie, and frankly, I believe it's illegal. According to our Constitution, you cannot discriminate. We need to educate them to be successful. And we can, we have in the past in this world through hard work, discipline, respect, academic achievement. How about the three Rs? Maybe we should get off the social justice issues and go back to reading, writing, arithmetic to equip our kids to raise their standards so they can be whatever they want to be and dream whatever they want in this wonderful country we live in. I'm sorry. Let's hold them to a higher standard. Let's not demean them and say, "Oh, you can't overcome because you're a victim and based on the color of your skin." And, you know, it's not fair. You've been unfairly treated. So... And you should look at your family and friends and teachers, and they're just holding you down. Victims have never been overcomers by claiming their victimhood and that being their identity.
And Ms. Radke, I know that the three minutes went by fairly quickly, so if you don't mind, just...
Okay, I'll wrap it up.
Thank you.
Um... Two things. Last week, my understanding is that the local districts' superintendents voted on hiring a director of equity and inclusion. Is that correct? You would know that. Did they hire one?
This is not a...
Oh, okay. Okay, you don't have to say it. But anyway, I'll put it out there. We'll find out. Yeah, we'll find out. So... And they're going to implement CRT in our schools. So it's already here. I... I'm going to end with a quote by Tom Sewell. He says, "Have we reached the ultimate stage of absurdity where some people are held responsible for things that happened before they were born, while other people are not held responsible for what they themselves are doing today?" I'm excited to hear what you guys have to say about CRT at the end of this meeting and the community input and involvement. We need that. We need to know what this is before we start... We'll lose a generation to a corrupt, divisive philosophy if we don't really look into this and know what it's about before we implement this in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, anytime. Good evening, everyone. My name is Marion Laux. I'm currently a student at Rock Ridge Public Schools on the Virginia High School campus. I'm going into 10th grade.
Ms. Laux, could you speak up just a little bit?
Sorry.
No, you don't have to apologize. It's hard to hear with the rain and the thunder.
Would you like me to restart?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you move closer?
Move closer.
No, we need her to stay where she is so that she can be on camera.
Oh, okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Marion Laux. I'm currently a student at Rock Ridge Public Schools on the Virginia High School campus. I'm going into 10th grade. The reason I am addressing you this evening is because I have concerns about students using social media in our school for school functions, such as choosing new captains for sports, student council meetings, student body voting, and some other student activities. The reason that this is more of a big deal now is because so many people use social media in my school. There was an article the other day in the newspaper on a man who is using Snapchat, in particular, to find young girls, assault, and kidnap them. Many other predators use social media to find their victims. I think the school administration and the school board should take a stand against the use of social media among students for school-related functions. For the safety of our students, please consider this request. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. All right. Next is the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented or with an amendment.
With amendment?
I said either as presented or with any amendments.
I move that.
Item 4.11, it's not an amendment, but with the resignation of Mr. Fordy, the school board and the school district has to reexamine the school district's involvement in the Everest Rec Commission. And I think maybe I should have that under unfinished business. Okay?
Was that, that was it? Director Sarkin, is that your only amendment? Is there a second?
Four.
So there's a motion to move Agenda 4.11 to unfinished business. Support any further discussion? Call those in favor, superpower, you say aye.
Aye.
Pose a sign. Motion carries unanimously.
We don't have a tornado coming.
Nope, not. So, under instructions, 5.1 is to consider approval of the manual arts demo bid. Mike Crowe Sanders.
We have hard copy backups, as always. Always prepared.
My 13-year-old's home by himself. He's got a couple of friends over there.
You and your team able to speak up?
Yes, we can. I can't get my attachment to open. It says that we're there. Tell you what, we'll start without it, and if you can get it going, we will. There we go. So thank you for letting us address the board tonight. I'm Patrick Gallagher, the Senior Project Manager for Crowe-Sanderson Construction. Going to give you an update tonight. One of the things that we'll do is talk about the overall project funding. As well as the current budget status, and then a change order that we have that goes with that added funding from Crowe-Sanderson Construction. And then we'll go down each of the four projects. There are the Laurentian Elementary, the Rockbridge High School, North Star Elementary, and then the structural demolition. Just a real quick quarterly summary as per contract, we give you each quarter of the length of the project. So, first of all, on the revenue side, we have the original budget that was brought forward for the referendum. Stand, let me stand over here. Does that work? And then we had several different additions to the budget, a $2 million addition, a $1 million addition, and then we had some, I'll skip over here quick, fundraising that has been ongoing, and we were able to infuse that back into the project as well as some capital contributions for the lighting project, for the flooding fields. Thank you. And then the deferred maintenance commitments that we have on two of the projects, one on North Star Elementary as well, and as well as the spectrum buildings, and we have those areas as well. And then we have the E-rate funding from the IT department. So, all of those funds brought together is a new grant total of $190,000, $1 million, sorry. And we just want to go through that budget today. That is all the revenue that is in the current referendum with those changes. And then we'll go to current budget status. Little lag in this as we... Okay. So this is working well. Back line. There we go. So out of each of the projects, we have the Laurentian Elementary. Remember, that went very well in the bidding period. We had really good bidding that came in during that time, and we were under budget. We're over $353,000 under budget on that project. And then we have the Rockbridge High School. We have the structural demolition projects, and we have the North Star Elementary. All of those budgets, when they all are shaken down, we are, it says a negative number here, it's the way the budget is set up in a formula, but we are $310,0681 to the good on that overall budget. So that's good news. Been a lot of changes, a lot of different unforeseen conditions on the site, some unique weather, but things are going quite well on the project. And if you've been up on the site or driven by it, you've seen a lot of progress go on. So with those added revenues, both the architect team and the agent, which is, we are the construction manager agent, we have a percent of additional fee that we get as well as site services, contingency, and general conditions. And we haven't written any change orders to date with the school district, but now that we have gotten to this point in the project where all these budgets have been pretty well-aligned, we've gone through some value engineering. We've also gotten quite a few of the change order items from the site work done. We're now ready to submit that, and we'll submit that for the next meeting. We just wanted to let you know that that is going to happen, and we have drafted that change order, and we'll be going over that with Spencer on your business manager and then bringing that to the board. So, we want to go through each project very quickly, especially given the late hour that we're in here. We will start with Laurentian Elementary. Pete Avanen is the project manager, and he will talk through that.
As Pat said, I'm Pete Avanen, project manager for the Laurentian Elementary, and also the demolition projects and the future North Star Elementary. Good to see you guys. Quick update, go through the construction updates, safety, budget, schedule, quality. If you guys have any questions, just stop being asked at any time. So first up is safety. A lot of man-hours worked, over $111,000, qualified workers on-site daily, about 16 prime contractors altogether, with zero injuries. That's a great stat right there. Zero impact from COVID, no additional positive cases. We also have OSHA consultations that we work with the state of Minnesota. They come out and consult with us about safety items and different things that we can do to stay safe on the site rather than have the enforcement side come out. Our last one was on 30th of June with excellent results, just a few minor issues here and there that we took care of that day. And then our next one will be this September of all the projects. Quick budget update. Pat had touched on this already. This is the snippet now from the master referendum budget for just the Laurentian Elementary. Your total project funding of $34 million, which that hasn't changed on this project at all. And as Pat mentioned, we are under budget slightly, about $300,000. This is your total spent to date, and this is what's remaining. So, in a different visual. So what that means is we're approximately 77% complete. Project funds spent to date, 77%, remaining 23%, as you'll see later on in the presentation, that matches up with our schedule. So the project contingency started off at the $1.7 million, and we have infused some money from the projected general condition savings that we've had throughout the project. We've been very frugal on using those general conditions on the Laurentian Elementary, sorry. And we've been able to move some of that into the contingency to take care of any future unforeseen items. So 85% spent. We have $227,000 left, which is about 12%. That'll get us through the next four months. There we go. So as you can see with the schedule, leave the pass in the dust, full throttle ahead. 77% complete matches up with our budget, so we're right on track. Four months to go, so it's coming to a rapid conclusion here by the end of November. Just overall, our site work will be done mid-October, so in the fall here with all our plantings and landscaping. The building envelope, so the building exterior, metal panel, windows, cast stone base, roofing, that kind of stuff, that'll be done by the end of August, so that's coming up really quick, a month from today. And interior construction, our metal studs, our mechanical, electrical rough-ins, drywall, that kind of stuff, will be done in early September. And then our interior finishes to wrap up the project. As you can see, we've been painting quite a bit already, 80% complete. Ceilings, we just got to start, and flooring is going to start here in the next couple weeks, and we'll wrap up by the end of November on schedule. Oh, there we go. Okay. So, we're on to the quality part now, the last part for this project. Just some photos for all of you to see. So this is the main entry coming in, and you'll have your parking loop here for parent drop-off, and you got your major parking lot back here, and this loops all the way around to the front side of the building. So as you come in, you'll see your big gym box right here, and front canopy right here. So that's from last month, moving on to this month. All the metal panel, all of our windows are in. Loading dock area, and actually, these panels are up now. And we have a nice rock wall here now, so you'll see that next time. So last month, you could see where we're at for the self-learning wing, and that's the progress in about a month. So all the metal panel complete, all the windows are in. You can see the end of that wing, so to orientate you, we're right about here. Moving into the courtyard, so you can see the rendering drawing up here where we were last month, where we're at this month, with some nice concrete. You'll see some other, better pictures of that as well. That's the east end of the north learning wing. Starting to get our glass in, lots of glass, natural light in the building. There's your north learning wing, so this wing here on the north side, metal panel, windows. Oh, sorry. There's a playground here for the older kids, one through six. That's going to be the ball field right there, our topsoil pile that we're using around the site. So moving into the building, as you come in to the main, from the main entry here, you got your bridge, you got a playground here, your main common stairs, your south stairs. So this is up on the bridge looking back down at the main entry. So, community room on Level 1, so we're standing in the heart, looking towards the north. Got some Wolverine green here, custom color, beautiful. A learning neighborhood in one of the wings, cool ceiling features. This would be a kind of a media center with books and their iPads and that kind of stuff. Cubby area, so just working on drywall in the north wing here, and we'll have cubbies here for the kids. So the self-learning wing, looking down the hallway, getting some color. Flashes in there now. And up on the second level, here's another shot of that learning neighborhood area, nice wide open, lots of natural light. So here's that courtyard, and a nice river of concrete here and fancy benches looking out from the bridge. Your tech commons area, so you have a counter here, some monitors, green screen, kind of fun stuff. Here's the gym. So you have a projector screen over here. Main court goes this way. Just a picture of the translucent windows those are in. Pumps and boilers, I know some people like those. Abby? Yeah, right? That was good, right? Our main switchgear for the main power coming in. We do have a backup generator as well. Admin office, that's my corner, I mean Noel's corner office. I had a throwback of it. Electrical service, just in progress, pulling wire. Power is hot. So I thought that was cool, nifty lift that you don't normally see on projects. We use that to actually get up and over the south stairs to work on some framing. I save the best for last. Jeff? Oh, come on. Oh. So Jeff Carey from the district was nice enough to get us some drone photos. So here again, here's that parking loop, the main parking here, our ball field over here, gym right here, main heart, main entry, the self-learning wing, north learning wing. And this is just another look at the courtyard. Looking pretty slick coming along. Four months ago, go, go, go. Any questions?
All right. Thank you.
Followed by Paul Knoll, who's going to talk to you about the Rockbridge High School.
All right. $120 million in 10 minutes. Let's do it. This is going to be great. Thank you, Jason. All right. Let's get right to it. I have a great picture, I promise. May have to, oh, there we go. There we go. So, "Check out the most beautiful high school campus in the upper Midwest," is the title of our first photo here. So credits again for the drone photography goes to Jeff Carey. This is the state of your building as it sat just a couple days ago, and I know that the board had an opportunity to walk through the site today, get a little bit more hands-on. Check out the beautiful heavy timber framing in the main commons area. The building is coming along very spectacularly, and you can really get an idea of the sense of the spaces in there, and the project is going very well as it sits right now. Here's just a view from the southeast portion. Again, you get the beautiful backdrop. This is looking towards the athletic fields area. There's a lot of construction going on with the parking lots right now that has started to open up. All right.
All fields are back here.
Oh, yeah, thank you, Patrick. So then, perfect segue into that, too. This is aerial photo of your four athletic fields as they stand today, just a couple weeks away from putting up those big lighting towers on the varsity athletic fields, and just a couple weeks away as well from the first artificial turf surface going down, too. But you can definitely get a sense of the forms there. So this is just a good layout of each one of the spaces. Again, you've got your gymnasiums up in the top-left corner, going around to the music suite, performing arts center and aquatics. Learning neighborhoods are going great. Woods Lab and Metals Lab have taken off, and then we've got the mechanical food service and commons areas. All right, and there's just one more shot of those athletic fields. Remember, you got that really cool bridge through the wetlands that goes over and connects the two. All right, so, and our tagline, too. Get ready to unleash the Wolverines as our slide changes here. All right, so we'll hit safety, budget, schedule, quality on this project as well. Again, safety first as always. 140,000 hours of labor invested by your contractors into the project so far with zero injuries to date. That's a really fantastic record. We're going to go for another couple hundred thousand of worth of hours into the building, also with zero injuries as the target. So your contractors are doing a really fantastic job. They're doing a great job working safely. The high school site as well is utilizing the Min-OSHA consultation program. They were just out to the job site. They had some really great points that we could tune up on some things. And again, we're looking forward to the fall when Min-OSHA consultation can be back. consultation can be back again. All right, so the budget is going to be the next slide here, and again, as that's transitioning, you've got about thirty of your contractors are active right now, and we're at about the peak of people power in terms of hours investment right now. So you have about a hundred fifty workers on the site, and July is, was a big month as well. So Patrick already covered some of the additional funding. The majority of the additional funding for the entire referendum is attributed towards the high school project and committed towards the high school project right now. Again, there was some board direct contributions that were allocated towards this project. There was some really exciting fundraising work that was done. Willie's been doing a fantastic job with the Rock Ridge Rising campaign, and we sit down with Willie, Jeff, and Spencer every month as well and get those updates. Again, we had some capital fund commitments, varsity athletic lights, and we've got some E-rate things, too. So the new total for the high school is right at about, just under that one hundred and twenty million dollar mark right now. All right, and then moving on to the expenses side of things, too. Again, we've kind of reshook out the entire master referendum budget. This project is sitting at just a slight overage, but of course, on the whole, we have a net underage, so actually, things are, things are really fine, and you're sitting in a good place here, and we're continuing to track all the expenses with Spencer. So right now, your project expenditures are at thirty-five percent of money has gone out the door at this point, which means you've got sixty-five percent left remaining. So that means you've spent about forty-two million dollars in committed dollars right now that have been paid out. In terms of the project contingency, moving towards the low side of that, there's just over five hundred thousand dollars remaining, which means that the time to add is not now, unless it comes alongside additional funding. But we'll continue to monitor this contingency, make sure that we can deliver the project and its base scope successfully to the end of the project. So we are eighty-eight percent right now spent, with ten percent of the contingency remaining.
And one of the things as the slide changes to keep in mind is the rock and the site. We are pretty much through most of that now, so a lot of those unforeseen's is what made up the bulk of that expenditure. So the good news is, we're pretty much on the foundations as it is, and we can control that a lot better.
Okay, excellent. In terms of schedule on the project, you are thirty-seven point five percent complete with your project, and again, comparing that to what you've spent so far for cash out the door, if you remember, that figure was thirty-five percent. That is perfectly appropriate, your expenditures for where you are at with the project. That's always a good metric for us to use to double-check, to make sure that things are not askew or out of alignment. So eleven months have been completed on the project as of kind of the June thirtieth timeframe. Nineteen months left to go, so can't wait to have half of that pie chart filled in. We're gonna be there in just a little bit.
No, you, you, you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Excuse me. Originally, the substantial completion date was August of twenty-two for a twenty-two school year opening. I knew it had slid to November of twenty-two. Now it's January of twenty-three. I think this is the first time we've seen that date.
I think we've been reporting January of twenty-twenty-three this entire time, but I could be mistaken.
It's been a thirty-month project shortly after we got the design into the SDDD level. That's when we, we went to thirty months, we held it there. And we started in July, well, pretty much a year ago.
There's the November enclosure, I think I know that.
That could be. Yeah, the enclosure of the building by November is our goal.
I'll go check.
Good point. Okay, excellent. Does that answer your question, Director Schauberg?
Yeah.
For now.
Apparently it was mistaken.
Okay, excellent. And to dovetail onto that, are looking to have full building enclosure for winter coming in Thanksgiving of this year. All right, so pretty familiar with the phasing of the project, that hasn't changed, so I'm gonna hop off from that graphic. Just a reiteration, each one of those bars is a different phase within your building here, and as you can see, we're, we're once again working on every single part of your building at the same time, lots of progress being made daily. Your foundations are right at about that one hundred percent mark, just a couple more pores and we're there. Precast concrete, whether it's floors or wall systems, ninety-five percent complete. Looking at seventy percent of your major steel has been erected, and right now, working heavily on getting all of the interior slab work completed, just nearing the fifty percent mark for pores there. And working our way counterclockwise around that envelope. If you got a chance to see the brick today, really looks fantastic. The skin and the rest of the metal wall panels that you're gonna have on the building are gonna look phenomenal as well. So can't wait to be able to show you those in a couple of months, too. All right, and on the quality side of things, really excited to have some students from your career technical ed classes actually start with some of the self-build construction projects in just a couple short months here. So we've been working with some of your CTE staff, as well as Michelle Ufford, and really working on making this a fun experience for the students coming, again, in just a couple months. So at the next quarterly report, we should hopefully have some great photos to be able to show of, of some Wolverines doing some construction, which would be very cool. All right, and then just to end with this portion of the presentation, just to help with some visualization, there's been some great renderings done by the design team, which are gonna be shown on the top half of the slides, and then we tried to take a picture from the exact same place in real-life space, just to help envision what the building is gonna look like. So here's the main entry sequence. You can see those heavy timber glue lamps have started to be installed, about half of the timber decking is on, too, so that's really looking impressive, and you can get a sense of what that entry sequence into your building is gonna look like there. All right, and then just stepping inside the building, it's gonna look a lot nicer than it does right now, but this is your main common space. Again, there's that heavy timber decking that's gonna add that really cool northern Minnesota feel into the common space. All right, and then if you kind of hop over the ledge and go down to level one, this is that really neat space that connects the two technical education spaces, so a place for students to come together and share their work. All right, this is just a shot of one of the learning neighborhoods, so this happens to be the northern learning neighborhood, kind of looking out into the learning courtyard in the background there. Lots of mechanical and electrical work, kind of the unsung heroes of a building going in right now. Takes a lot of time to get all those in. All right, and then this is that learning courtyard space, just a couple months away from starting metal panel installation, too, in addition to the brick, so your two main envelope types will be going at the same time. All right, here's a shot of the performing arts center. You can see it's so dark in there because we have the entire roof structure and all the decking on. We'll add those pretty stars in later, and then kind of the creme de la creme, the beautiful Wolverine den, athletic commons area, pool to the left, gymnasium to the right, walk in under a beautiful timber canopy to get there. It's full of special moments everywhere inside of this building. You could see from the site that it's one of the nicest spaces in the upper Midwest, and the rest of these kind of built-out finishes on the interior are gonna reinforce that. So that was a hundred twenty million dollars in ten minutes again, so are there any other remaining questions by the board? All right, we will hand it on over to our next presenter, so we can keep this moving. Go ahead, Pete.
Thank you, Paul. I wanna go back to high school and be a Wolverine again. That's exciting. Okay, now we're gonna go through the North Star Elementary, which will be the future and last project in Virginia. So agenda, design update, bidding update, where we're at with schedule, budget update. So design update, this is just a sneak peek of the final site here, the existing gym that's there currently in Virginia, and this is the new building with your outdoor patio up here, outdoor basketball court, some nice play hills down here for the kids, nice big ball field, and another big hill here, some tachinite paths for some outdoor learning. So here's a rendering of the school, main entry here, again with the wood theme, bringing the northern Minnesota out, as Paul said. Here's that outdoor patio that we talked about. And as you can see, lots of brick on this building versus the other elementary, which was a lot of metal panel, and the high school had a combination of brick and metal panels, so. Again, just more renderings of the main entry here, monument sign where it's gonna say North Star Elementary. Level one layout, so your main commons here. Level two is more of your learning spaces and studios, informal media centers here with some custom casework, and that is where the learning terrace will be for outdoor learning. And then level three is very similar to level two, just no patio. So some indoor renderings here at the commons area, bringing in that Rock Ridge green. Other commons. Here's that informal media center. You can see some, bringing some wood into this, some custom casework here. So bidding update. We've gone through the planning and project development, gone through the pre-referendum, now we're in the pre-construction. We've done an SD estimate, which is schematic design, we've done the design development estimate, and now we're currently working on the S, or the CD estimate, the construction document. So we've gone through all of these. This is our last estimate before the bidding phase. So current status, the construction document is a hundred percent complete from the design team, so we're currently working through that estimate and coming up with some value management alternates, make sure that we can stay within budget on the project, and we'll be presenting that estimate to you guys for approval on your next board meeting on August ninth. So some other things that tie into the North Star Elementary is the existing gym improvements. So we are taking that out of the deferred maintenance funding, and that'll be a new gym roof, some structural repairs that are needed, and then obviously some rebranding to bring out that Rock Ridge Wolverine. So schedule, as I mentioned, we're going through the construction document estimate right now, so we'll get that approved here in August. Actual contractor bidding, our public bid, will be January of twenty-two, but before that, we're going to do some abatement and demo bidding, because we do need to abate and demo the existing structures that are there, so that we can build the new school and attach to the existing gym. So by the end of the year, we're gonna do that, so we get those contractors on board and ready to go, and that work will take place then in June and through August of twenty-twenty-two, so next summer. And then, kind of jumping back and forth here, so the high school portion, so we're gonna demo the Roosevelt Elementary, build up the new one, and then in twenty-twenty-three, during that same timeframe, we'll demo the rest of the high school and the loan annex.
Because they'll be in the new high school at that point.
Yeah. So construction, the, most of the construction is gonna start September of twenty-two then for the new school through January of twenty-four. Move in of February through August for that September, starts in twenty-twenty-four.
That is one year earlier than original for the decision of the board several months ago.
Mm-hmm. So budget update, again, this is a snip from the master referendum budget. The total project funding has gone up with the addition of the deferred maintenance that was mentioned earlier in previous presentations. So we're sitting pretty good right now. We have spent some money on pre-construction, obviously with the CM site services putting estimates together, and the design team putting all these beautiful designs together. So we have spent about three percent, about one million out of the total funding, right on track. Nothing spent on the contingency, because we haven't started yet. And that's all I got.
Pete, how confident are you with, you hear, all you hear about is shortages, you hear about rampant inflation in the construction sector. I know we mitigated some of that by, as Pat mentioned, moving the schedule up a year, but how confident are you that our budget is solid?
Well, with the estimate that we have right now, we did get a lot of subpricing to account for the inflation and some of the crazy market stuff that's going on right now, but to ensure that we're gonna stay within budget, we're using alternates that you guys have seen before on previous projects. So we'll be using the alternates and possibly some value engineering also. Thanks. Anything else?
I have a question or two for Pat, when you had yours in the beginning, Pat. On your second page here, overall budget status, I see demolition included there, but I don't see it in the project funding for demo. Seven-five, seven, seven point five?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then, on the district direct funds, where's that one point five million coming from?
Those, that was one point five million dollars that was added early on in the project.
Is that coming out the general fund, or is it the, is the referendum money?
If you remember back when you were at two boards, at one point, you initially put in one point five million dollars from the Virginia school board, and then later committed another million later for a total of two and a half, if I remember it.
So are you saying that one and a half million and then down on this additional, remaining Virginia district funds? This is another million, so that's two point five million?
That is correct. And then there was three million that came from the Evolith.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, and deferred maintenance commitments, the one point seven three million, and that's long-term facilities maintenance money?
On the existing gym, if you remember, we're not, we're not gonna demolish the existing gym, the other facilities on the Virginia campus got demolished, so that is, that is able to be used for that type of a use, and upgrade that facility. It's a lot of rebranding, new roof, new mechanical, new electrical within that gym.
So the one million, one and a half million direct district funds, and the two oh five, two hundred five thousand, and the seven hundred ninety-five thousand, that was the previous Virginia, two point five million dollars?
Okay, we jumped around a little, so.
You said that there were two point five million from the former Virginia, so this is.
That million.
That's a million, and this is one and a half million?
Mm-hmm.
District direct funds?
That is correct.
Okay, and why did you not put it down here?
Because this was the initial referendum when we first started, and these have all happened since then, so we wanted to separate them, so you could see each iteration of added funding. Okay? We're good. Can talk a little demolition here.
Yeah. I'm Morgan Siopa, I'm the project engineer intern with Carl Sanders in the summer, and I've got to actually do the work on all these projects, but lately I've been working on the demolition projects. We'll go through the hazardous materials and demo update, a budget update, and any closing comments or questions. First, we'll start with the Evolith Junior High School. The abatement process is complete, our demolition is in progress right now. We are planning on completing that demolition on the sixth of August. Following that, we will have the site restoration.
Maybe talk a little bit about site restoration. What does that include?
So the site restoration, we are making this a sellable lot. We've done work with the contractors to ensure there won't be any ponding, there won't be any uneven spots, it'll be a nice lot. This is some update pictures. This was in the middle of the week, last week. And then this was on Friday, about ninety-nine percent of the building was down then. Right now, we're working on hauling material out. Manual Arts Building, abatement is in progress right now. We're planning on completing that on the fourth of August. Demolition will be brought to school board tonight, and this is pending SHIPPO approval, so that is the State Historic Preservation Office. And then we'll bring you to the main schedule side here. So we have the old junior high school. We have already gone through the abatement, we are now here at the demolition, July through August twenty-twenty-one. Manual Arts Building here, we are working on the abatement as we speak, and then to be determined, but if we followed this schedule, it would be August through September.
Thank you, Morgan. Any questions over on the Evolith campus so far?
What part of the process is the SHIPPO, the State Historic Preservation Office procedure? What's the status of that?
The status of the SHIPPO, so maybe Jeff Carey can speak better to that, but I believe the letter has been, or all the additional information has been sent to SHIPPO for their review and approval, correct?
Yes, the SHIPPO did break back, they need some additional information, but the initial But the initial letter and the environmental assessment report has been added into the city now.
So the city is doing an environmental worksheet?
Yes.
They have the approval authority, correct?
Have they submitted that yet?
No.
So I just wanted to point out here real quick, we've been talking about these two facilities, which have been vacant for quite some time. And I know it's controversial, but those are the initial buildings because there is no occupancy in it right now. That is why we've done that in this earlier timeframe. Keep in mind that this is a newer portion of the building. This is a newer portion. And then there has been quite a bit of work done here on the elementary school. And these won't come down until '24, when the high school is occupied and students move out of that school. So we've got quite a bit of time to either sell or do things with those, depending on how the board wants to move forward.
All right, so moving over to the Virginia campus, this is all the same schedule that I showed you for the North Star. So nothing changed there. Abatement and demo will be a separate bid package per that schedule. So starting in November, we'll send the ads out, we'll get our bids in so that we're all ready to go for next summer for abatement and demo. So that's just a map of, you know, how it looks over in Virginia. So the existing gym is going to remain that we're going to connect to. So this is the Roosevelt Elementary, in general speaking. So that's going to be demo first. And we'll build our new building. And then in 2023, we'll demo the rest of the high school. And that's where all that big field and tachanite paths and all that kind of stuff that you saw on the site plan.
The bulk of the demolition of that building will be done when there is no occupancy in this high school for the summer, by the way. So people have been concerned about that from a safety standpoint.
And that's just a picture here of where we're cutting the building. Because obviously that is all one building together, Roosevelt, the Malone, the Annex, the high school. So that is where we're going to cut. So over in Gilbert, right now, we're slated for 2022 for the junior high and elementary. And over in the old gym and pool area. All of these blue areas are all the fields, bus garage, tennis courts, that kind of stuff all remains currently. So budget update. Currently, with the information that we have from the abatement and demo of the junior high building is about $10 per square foot. So if we add up all of the square footage of buildings in the, in all three of these campuses, we will be about $2.4 million short. So that means 242,000 square feet that we can't demo in order to stay within the original budget. Now to come back to some of these notes to explain that, why that is, is at the beginning of the referendum, some items in Virginia was just a selective demo and not the entire building being demo, demolished. So now with the new design that came out after this, we have to demo all of the building. Also, over in Evolith, there was assumed to not demo the Franklin building. The bus garages, fields, or high school gym connector over in the Evolith Campus. But over in Gilbert, they were assumed to demo all, so the budget stood the same.
I thought we, I always assumed to demo the Franklin.
Right.
And we were, in Evolith, we were just keeping the, the new gym complex and the fields. And I'm pretty sure I remember that correctly.
So the very beginning of the referendum and pre-referendum work that was put together, putting these budgets together for each project. And we have those slides I can share with you after too, if you'd like.
I wasn't around at the very beginning. I was around for the last.
Yeah. So with that, at the very beginning, that was the original, original plan for the referendum, how we came up with the $7.5 million budget for the demo.
I thought the original plan included the demolition of all buildings. That's how I remember it.
So did I.
So there was everything. So at the very beginning, Malone Hall, there was a lot of discussion. If you remember, Malone Hall is one of the newer portions of the Virginia campus. And Malone Hall was going to remain. And then over in Washington, we were going to just demolish the bleacher area and the pool area.
Oh, Roosevelt? Yeah, the pool and bleachers, yep, in the center.
So that, that changed when we got further into the design and looked at what the requirements were for that elementary school. And I think a good change to not have a mixture of that older building with that. But when that decision was made, we adjusted. But regardless, the intent was to try to sell as many facilities as possible, as long as it went to a responsible developer that would actually not leave the building partially completed or have it go to an urban blight type situation. So we just wanted to bring that up to you because it's pretty attainable to, to sell 242,000 square foot. Just as an example.
Mm-hmm. So overall, like we just mentioned, the 242,000 square feet. And as Pat mentioned, trying to push to sell as many buildings as possible. And one example of completing that goal is to sell Franklin and all of Gilbert. And it's just one combination, it can do any combination. But that gives you right there 281,000 square feet, which puts us under budget for the demo.
But what does that do for the, what does, what is that going to do for the individual? Like the city of Gilbert taking over this building? How is it going to affect the delicate demolition that they might want on certain parts of this? So if they, I know there's one portion of the building, the older portion with the old gymnasium that they want you to demolish. If you were to demolish that, then there's just somewhere else that you would need to retain that square footage. So it could be one building in Evolith. Let's say you're going to keep the gym there and somebody is going to buy that. So that's what we're getting is, we just gave you one example of the square footage so that you have an order of magnitude of how, it is very attainable if we just sell a few of the buildings to still be within budget.
I just find it, Evolith, that it'd be very hard to sell any of the buildings in Evolith just because of, just because of just what's going on with the purchase agreement or not purchase agreement, the right of refusal of Evolith. It's going to be very hard to sell any buildings in Evolith. So.
That's why we gave you the example of Gilbert.
I don't believe with the second amendment to our agreement that there, the right of first refusal is still in our agreement with the city. It was in the second, uh, first amendment, but it's not in the second amendment. All we have to do is give 30 days notice once everything's demoed to the city of Evolith and/or Gilbert to see if they want to buy it at market value. So I believe the right of first refusal is totally gone. Am I correct, Noel?
You, you, the school board can still sell the properties. The city of Evolith just wants to, they have the option to buy them if they want. They can't stop the sale from going through, but if they want to buy them instead, they could.
But that's a right of first refusal.
Yes.
That's not right.
But yes, they still are involved even under the second agreement.
I'm kind of confused because you're describing a right of first refusal and Director Sorkin is saying it's gone.
The city of Evolith will still look at whatever you decide to do. And then they will have the option of becoming involved if they choose or not. But that's the city of Evolith's decision, not yours.
And so Pat, when you look at the numbers, we spent what, 800? It's going to be, depending on the vote tonight, will be up to probably 800 and some thousand dollars in just demolition of two buildings in Evolith. And that's not, and then you've got a whole campus that you, that was, I remember, as I remember, we were going to demo all of them. We didn't want the city. We were going to take down the rock wall, the Moore Stadium. And then all of a sudden, the city of Evolith got involved and they said they wanted this, but, but, you know, and, but they wanted it with the rock wall removed, correct?
I know we're making assumptions and.
I just remember that it was basically, it had to be completely cleared of all buildings so it could be redeveloped.
That was my understanding originally, and it has changed, that we had money to demolish everything. And anything that we'd be able to repurpose, we would, we would have that as to use in other parts of the project. I had never seen Franklin not being budgeted for demolition. But I've only been around for three years.
And we can bring you that presentation when it was done, but it, it was changed over time. And that's kind of the evolution of a project like this. That's why we wanted to bring it up today, so that.
Thank you.
We refresh the memory.
The presentation was changed to include the, to include the Franklin. I mean, who, who said that, okay, we're going to keep this building? I mean, we can't even sell, we couldn't even sell the two buildings we have. And then now all of a sudden, I mean, is, is, just by default, is the city of Evolith going to end up with a building in their town?
I think there's.
Because you didn't give consideration to the complete demo project?
I think there's a big difference between the two facilities that you, you've had issues with. They were controversial here. They were, they were older buildings that have been vacated for close to 30 years, close to 30 years, other than the daycare was in the basement of the one. So they were pretty bad disrepair, and I get that. And, and I, back when we were looking at this and making the changes, you had new windows in Franklin, you had, you had quite a few upgrades that you've done, the gym's connected to it. And because we aren't going to look at demolition on that till 2024, we really feel that now and then engaging with a real estate agent, working with developers, we could probably sell those.
Probably, is the.
Mm-hmm.
Probably doesn't sell them.
Yeah, I like the word. Keep in mind you're being a very good, responsible community member as a school district. Your, most districts, most, don't do what you're doing. A lot of them will just leave that land or sell it to somebody who doesn't have a good plan. And then it becomes an empty building, which becomes a drain on the community in a lot of cases. And sometimes good success. So I, I think if we work that fine line of working with developers, working with real estate agents, we've got all this time from now till 2024, I think we can be successful. And, and we're willing to help out from Carl Sanderson's side with cost estimating and anything you need to do that.
And, and after it's all said and done and you hand over the keys and the kids go into the building and you guys have to save, Franklin's still sitting there, we can't sell it now at the board. What do we do? The planning of the lineup of the building?
Had a lot of time to work with you between now and '24. We're going to, we're going to succeed.
At least we have to get through this presentation.
I totally get, I totally get your point.
But thank you.
Pat, I asked at the last meeting what the rush was to knock these buildings down. And you said, well, we can, as long as we have these contractors here, we can kind of double up and save money. We're going to be doing this till 2024. What's the hurry to knock down any building today, other than we need the space?
Now there's, there's kind of a break because we don't knock down, well, if, depending on what happens on manual arts, then the next building will be Virginia Elementary. So we have to knock that down to provide the space for the new building. And then there's another break because those are all contingent on students moving out to new schools. Does, does that answer your question?
What about here? What about Gilbert? Where does that fit into the?
You want to go back to the Gilbert slide?
No, no. But you just, you basically said that, well, when they vacate Gilbert.
I believe it was '22.
'22.
For '22. We don't have to knock this building down immediately?
Problem is, once you vacate a building, now you're going to have the same problems you had with the two buildings that we've currently worked on for demolition. And then you, you have vandalism, you have issues that, that arise if you don't take care of them quite quickly. The other thing is, is once we bid them, now we have a good, firm budget hold on what that's going to cost. And it isn't, the $10 a square foot isn't just knocking the building down and hauling it away. It's that site restoration piece that I, as Pete talked about, and, oh, I guess that Morgan talked about, which is the backfill and the seeding and make it a good free draining site. So we really want to get a handle on those as soon as we can. We'll bid those probably quite a bit earlier than when we knock them down so we can attain that. And when I was talking about contractors available, really it's Carl Sanderson Services. So while we're building these other three facilities, we can pretty efficiently do the demolition of various projects. We have a superintendent and a project manager that's working double duty to do that demolition. So that's the part you save.
Okay.
I mean, if you just look at the roof space, I hate to drag this on, but if you look at the roof space of the junior high and then I'll compare it, all the roof space of all the buildings that are going to go down. You spent $600,000 for that. Tell you what, you're going to be probably close to $3 to $4 million by the time you knock down the Franklin. If it goes down, the old, where the swimming pools are, the old, I mean, you're going to be, I would say you'll be well into the $3.5 to $4 million in demo.
So I believe the remaining square footage there for the rest of the Evolith Campus, including the gym in Franklin, was about 381,000, I think, from that slide, and at $10 a square foot, it's, you're quite equal.
Yeah, I mean, that's a lot of money. I mean, that, that wasn't budgeted. I mean, I mean, I don't know. I just don't want to leave the city with a building that, you know, that we could, we can't sell, okay? Don't have money to demo it. What do we do with it? You know what I mean?
I'm going to flip that around.
Yeah.
We got to sell it.
You can't sell it. I mean, you can't sell nothing in Evolith. I mean, I'm just, I mean, I'm not trying to be.
No, I understand.
Combative or condescending at all. I'm just saying, it's not going to happen, Pat. It's just, that's, you would only pray.
I think this end of the.
In five years, come and tell me that we got a buyer and it's, there's people moving in, then I'll eat those words.
I'll look forward to that.
I will. I will write it down for you, Mr..
I think that area right there.
Okay, I am, I'm, I am done. We need to keep moving this meeting right along, and I'm sorry I took so much time.
That's why we're here.
Okay.
I'm going to let Morgan take over for the last part, which is the review and approval from the board for the manual arts demolition.
So just for clarification, we're going back to 5.1.
Yeah, I just got a little thrown off when we had technical difficulties. So we've gone through the quarterly presentations, 5.2s. And now we're going to go back up to what was 5.1 on the agenda, consider the approval of the manual arts demo bid. I promise I'm the last one. You don't have to listen to us anymore. So I'm Morgan, as I mentioned before, I'm presenting the demolition package for the manual arts building. We'll go through the bidding process, the bidding review, and the conclusion. So we have gone through the planning phase. We've gone through the pre-referendum phase, pre-construction phase. And now we are here at the bidding and awarding phase. I will recap that in a couple of minutes here about what bids we received, who the responsible low bidder is. Bidding review. We've received two bids. Rachel Contracting was the low responsible bidder. We determined that after doing some of our bid tabbing process. They bid at $198,760.
Could you tell me who the other bidder was and what their bid was?
I don't have that off the top of my head.
And I don't have the exact dollar amount. We just presented that before, but I can get that for you.
Do you think you might have gotten a package deal with Vite to do both buildings?
Um, they, they knew they had the other one when they bid this one, so that was an advantage for them. So I don't think so.
So was it substantially more than a $198,760?
Um, it wasn't substantially more.
I don't recall that number, yeah.
I'll have to pull it up.
We can definitely get it over to you.
So in the whole perspective here, we've mentioned before, we have that 7.5 million in the total demo budget. This is 198,760. That would be 2.7% of the total demo budget.
Morgan, can I ask you just to speak up?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Patrick's been yelling at me about that the whole summer. I'll try. Okay, so this is in a visual representation. We have here the Evolith Junior High School demo and abatement package, 5.6%. We have the Evolith Manual Arts Abatement, which is 0.6%. And then this package would be 2.7%. That leaves 91.1% of the total budget left. That leaves 91.1% of the total budget left.
One thing to remember about the manual arts is we did have some abatement before, that's why the abatement dollar amount is so low.
What was the cost, Morgan, what was the cost of abatement for the manual arts building?
I do have that.
What is it? This?
Thousand. We know that one. Forty-four thousand.
Okay, so that brings the total, that brings the total demolition up to about 247,000?
Yeah, it'd be about 3.3%. So, 2.3% less than the junior high school.
Two hundred and thirty-two.
By the way, just speaking of demo, was there any change, any up charges or anything? Were they on budget with the demo of the junior high? They weren't going to come in with a surprise surprise, were they?
Uh, there was additional cost for a steam line that was wrapped with asbestos-containing insulation, six-inch steel.
We did have an allowance to cover that, so no change order.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the schedule, obviously, like we had mentioned before, everything tonight is contingent on the SHPO approval as well. So we had the pre-bid meeting on site on the 26th of May. We had the bid opening onsite at the K.A. office on the 2nd of June. We are here tonight presenting, say that we had the SHPO letter, everything was approved, and you guys approved it. We would award the contract tomorrow, pre-construction meeting Wednesday, and begin next week into September.
And that follows the final abatement period.
So the project overview, we have the demolition of the building, and also the site restoration. Here's another graphical image. We are going to be leaving all the green space green, we're not going to be messing with that. The only difference kind of in the site restoration of this site opposed to the junior high school is we will be having the contractor bring in six inches of compacted Class V gravel, similar to what a parking lot would be like.
Really extends your parking lot into this whole area into one large parking lot for the last couple of years here for the high school.
And to conclude, so, like we mentioned a few times, this approval is pending on the SHPO approval as well.
And our reasoning for bringing it up tonight, because I know there's some question, why are, why are we voting on this right now? We only have 30 days from the time we bid this. I'm sorry, 60 days on this one. Sixty on this one. So what we want to do is if the SHPO portion kicks it longer, we want to be able to have the approval, so if SHPO does give the approval, then we could demolish the building quite quickly. Good thing on this one, though, we foresaw this, we did an alternate. And when we did that alternate, we asked if we had from now until November, if it took that long to get the SHPO approval, what would your price increase be? The other contractor, Vite, had a slight increase, but Rachel did not. So they, they will demolish it for the same price, anywhere from now until, I think it's 1 November, is that correct?
I believe so.
Okay.
I have a couple questions. Number, I know, I know this was on our agenda about five weeks ago. What's changed since then is, is number one. And then, my other question is, if we were to approve this and award a contract, I mean, is that contract executed before the SHPO deal, or?
No. All it would do is if, if SHPO came in, in the middle of a month, in between your meetings, we wouldn't have to wait and then present again, and then get approval. We would just move forward after we got that approval.
Because I looked at the timeline that we just presented, and that's obviously not going to happen. I mean, we all know it, so why are we saying it? Why wasn't it changed?
If you, if you were to vote on it tonight, we don't know when SHPO approval is going to come in, so we just put those timeframes in there so that you could see our normal period and our normal cycle for doing a project like this.
Sure, but you aren't, we aren't going to award a contract tomorrow and have a pre-construction meeting on Wednesday before we have approval, which we all know isn't going to happen by then.
That whole thing will just slide. To answer your other question, why are we doing it now versus before, we actually ran into some more issues on the abatement process, so we gave them a little more time, and the fact that the SHPO approval process was in, in process, we decided, might as well just wait until this, this meeting instead of back in June.
Personally, I just think it's a little bit premature with the city just having received the information from us to... There's just so many, many things that, that could happen here. And I hear what you're saying, and I guess I'd rather have a special meeting to approve it. If we need
I would support that.
I, I move that we postpone action on the demolition, awarding of a contract, for all the reasons that Matt said. Plus, it's putting the cart before the horse. We don't know SHPO. I've got a letter here from the SHPO office dated July 12th, and there's all kinds of things that we should be doing, and even reviewing any purchase offers received, and postings, and public, the public input, and, and archive, archiving the historic, historic property, contacting the Evelyn Heritage Society.
Director Sorkin, can you provide that letter to the rest of the board?
Yes, I will. And St. Louis County Historical Society, there's so many things that need to be done, and will we get in the same situation as happened with the, the old Evelyn Junior High School?
So there's a motion, is there support?
Okay. I'll save my discussion.
I'd support that.
So there's a motion by Director Sorkin to postpone approval and support by Director Schoburg. Is there discussion?
And to continue, at, was it the last meeting, or one of the last meetings, it was said that, well, we got ourselves into a bind, into a pickle, by approving an abatement thing, I mean, approving a, a demolition, and how was that going to make us look? Well, this is the same situation. Why would we approve the, the demolition before we have these things worked out? I think it's premature also.
And the only difference would be, we would not execute the contract until the SHPO approval came through.
I don't, I don't, yeah, then, in that case, I don't think we need to act on it then.
Is there additional discussion?
And the bid would be, we anticipate the bid will still be good when we have the approval from the Historical Society.
Per their alternate number one, that is correct. Yep, Phil's, I believe it's 1 November, or is it October? And we do have Vite's bid. Vite's bid was $284,499 versus Rachel at $198,760, so.
Why was, why was there, why do you think there's a big discrepancy in that?
Okay, we're going to talk about the motion first.
All right, all right, sorry.
Is there any additional discussion on the motion?
I mean, if I, $198,760.
Just show on the screen. So is about $80,000, $90,000 different?
Thanks. Thank you.
About $90,000 different, just to answer your earlier question.
Any additional discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
I forgot to give petitions to the well, so I'm just letting you know, if you guys, the board all
That's fine, you can attend it to him, you don't have to announce it.
Well, I didn't, didn't, no, thanks.
We're under reports. 6.1 is Al Zupanic's proclamation, and that's Director Sorkin.
All right.
Thanks, Morgan.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Nice job, too, by the way. All right, um, the City of Evelyn, the City Council passed a resolution entitled Proclamation in Honor and Memory of Al Zupanic. And the proclamation said at the end that July 1st to July 8th, 2021 be declared Al Zupanic's Days in honor of Al Zupanic and remembrance of his selfless contributions to the Evelyn community. Now, although it says Evelyn community, I would, I would move that the board support this proclamation by the City of Evelyn in word and in spirit, because Mr. Zupanic, all of the things that are in this resolution, he also did for the school district. So I will read, I would like to read the proclamation as it was proposed and read at the Evelyn City Council meeting. Whereas the Evelyn City Council, and I would add the Rock Ridge School District, and its citizens have lost a great patron with the passage of Al Zupanic on June 14th, 2021. And whereas Al Zupanic owned and operated the Evelyn Country Foods IGA for nearly 40 years, and where Al Zupanic is to be recognized as a respected businessman and pillar in Evelyn's community, and to be remembered for his kindness, generosity, and humility, I would change that into the communities. Whereas Al Zupanic supported most every, and I would say, community and school cause, fundraiser, or event brought to his attention, often without receiving acknowledgement for his giving, even when it meant sacrificing his needs or the needs of his business. And whereas Al Zupanic identified the importance of keeping a viable grocery store operative for area residents, and in order to maintain a local hometown grocery store, he declined to profit from the sale of his building when approached to sell it. And whereas Al Zupanic has been admired by his employees, friends, and acquaintances as trustworthy, reliable, respected, patient, kind, humble, generous, and community spirited. And whereas Al Zupanic will be missed by all those whose lives he touched during his life, and whereas the legacy of Al Zupanic as a true humanitarian will be carried on by his employees and supporters of the Evelyn Country Foods IGAs and the surrounding communities. And so they proclaimed, you know, July 1st to the 8th as Al Zupanic's Days. I, again, I would like this read, uh, read into the school board minutes, the full, the full proclamation, and that the school board, Rock Ridge 2909, support this proclamation in word and in spirit.
Are you making a motion?
Yes.
I'll support. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Take five.
Agenda item 6.2 is the fundraising update with Willie Speltz and Deanna Kersey.
You don't have to ask.
Three minutes, Willie.
Yeah.
Just kidding, not funny, Tim, not funny at all. I only have about a 45-minute presentation, I'll try to get it down to 30, I promise. Just kidding. Deanna, come on up, please. Come on up. We have some great things, you can see them in the agenda packet, the fundraising, it doesn't stop, there's so many good people out there, and the first one I want to talk about is let Deanna talk about a really neat story inside our, if you're not familiar with it, we have a Rock Ridge Rising campaign to make this school even a greater place than is planned, to provide even better things that maybe we couldn't afford, to do things that maybe we wouldn't have been able to. And the community support, the alumni support, the Friends of Rock Ridge support has been absolutely incredible, and Deanna, tell us a story, please.
Well, hi, I'm Deanna Kersey, and on behalf of my siblings, Bill Kersey and my sister Karen Hoffner, oh, on behalf of my siblings, Bill Kersey and my sister, my brother Bill Kersey, my sis, I'm nervous, and my sister Karen Kersey Hoffner.
She's not been at the wash for one.
We have been pushing, not pushing, but creating some type of talk about raising money to name the track after my father, Steve Kersey. And this last month, on my mother's side, the McLeod's side out of Chisholm, the cousins got together, and you know a lot about my dad and various things, but he used to pull quarters out of the kids' ears, and he probably, yep, and he probably did it maybe to yourself or one of your kids when he saw them. So my family, on my mother's side, on the Lois McLeod-Kersey side, raised money with quarters. They called it quarters for Uncle Curz or quarters for Curz. And they raised 25, $2,500 to give to the Steve Kersey legacy. We are so humbled by the outpouring of anywhere from $50,000 to $30,000 from people throughout the area to support this project. And we, we are going to continue to do this, and I, it humbles, I tear up every time Willie calls me and says this happens and this happens, and I just want to thank the board for recognizing everything and making this a, a situation that may happen in about two or three years. And I also wanted to add in, because I am so proud of track, this year we put Rock Ridge together, Evelyn Gilbert, Virginia, and these girls and boys, over 100 of us, wasn't easy at first, but boy, these kids worked hard. And the girls, Rock Ridge, were the champions of the subsection track meet this past year. And if you could be on the bus with these kids after a track meet and see that they don't care where they're from, half the time they don't even know where each other's from, they just loved each other, and they work together. And I know this Rock Ridge is going to be dynamite when it opens, and if we all stay positive about everything that needs to happen. Dr. Schmidt, I do want to commend you for your, uh, letter to the editor, moving forward, because this is what we did. And it's moving forward to have, finally, Evelyn, Mr. Carey, is going to have a track. And I
I told Deanna when I started working here that I will get your track.
He did. He promised me. And I retired over six years ago, but I've still stayed with the program to make sure Thank goodness. Well, I don't know about that. I'm trying to create someone else to take my job. I just want to manage the new track. But I, I think it's just a wonderful, wonderful, the Virginia girls came over, Evelyn, Virginia boys came over, and never once complained about not having a track. Having things in the gym we had to modify or shop-put discuss. And I have a co-coach here, Marie Anderson, where him and I coached together for the first time, and we had eight, six to eight coaches, I believe, and not once did we argue about anything. It was absolutely one of the most beautiful experiences I've had in coaching. So I want to thank the board for also purchasing our uniforms and all of that to get us to be Rock Ridge, and these kids are tremendously proud of being Rock Ridge. All right.
Thank you, Deanna. You have been absolutely wonderful to work with in this Rock Ridge Rising campaign and the Steve Kersey Legacy Fund, you and Tom and your entire family, Bill, thank you, all of you, Karen, all the Kersey kids. So that, that's been a great, great story for us, and we look forward to continuing to raise the money. We've already, we already have a beautiful video scoreboard because of the Kersey family that you'll see at the new stadium, and now we're trying to get some more money raised so we can name the track after him in his honor, because he was a tremendous, tremendous track person, and hopefully we'll be able to tell his entire story. So, some of the, I just want to go over some of the donations that came in since the last time I was here. Bernie Kukar, we talked about him. He was an NFL referee, and he was from Gilbert, and Curz was his teacher, and he was very excited to give. And I want to thank the Golden Bear Foundation for working as the conduit for that, and I really appreciate that. Sometimes when you work with financial companies instead of directly with the person, they need to give it to a 501(c)(3), and the Golden Bear Foundation has been so kind. So take a look at the Golden Bears Foundation sometime and see if that's something you may be interested in giving to, because they've been real good to us so far. The George Kids, Carly Gunner and Bodie George, I think, now, don't quote me on this, I, I have to be careful, but I am, I am prefacing with that, I think Gunner George will go down in Rock Ridge athletic history as the first section champion ever. So that's kind of a neat little asterisk for the George Kids donation towards the Aquatic Center video scoreboard that we're seeking, so thank you to them. Jill Wirtinen, and along with Tim and Kathy Reardon, thank you for your donations towards the Gilbert High School classes of '84, '85, '86 matching opportunity. We have a anonymous donor who is challenging the Gilbert High School classes of '84, '85, and '86 to raise $10,000 for the Rock Ridge Rising campaign, and this person will double that and add $20,000 more in donation for a $30,000 donation in honor of Steve Kersey, and that's, that's where that one is rooting from. So I, I thank you, Jill Wirtinen, and then Tim and Kathy Reardon for your help in progressing towards that $10,000. That is also, there's a couple more that will be coming in towards that. So we're making progress, we're in the three, almost to $4,000 towards that $10,000. So if you have any connection to the Gilbert High School classes of '84, '85, '86, let me know, give me a call, look online, find me anywhere, we can talk about it, and we'll try to get it, get it, keep it going to that $10,000. Another one, we have classroom dedications, locker room dedication Another one, we have classroom dedications, locker room dedications, maybe open lab spaces in honor of, in memory of, and in Virginia we have the Harrington family, Mrs. Mary Harrington was a longtime social studies teacher in Virginia and their family has so kindly raised ten thousand dollars to name a classroom in Mrs. Harrington's memory on the new campus, so we thank the Harrington kids, you might recognize that name, Bah Harrington did play for the 1980 Olympic team and he is one of the Harrington kids, he and his wife, Mary, Mr. and Mrs. Joe Harrington and Turi and Ty Harrington Armstrong and the other two siblings will be getting their stuff in very soon, so we're excited about that. And one more, Allison Crybeck, her match came in from her State Farm, she had donated four thousand five hundred dollars and the company has now turned in their four thousand five hundred dollars for this year's total of nine thousand which will continue for the next five years and that's, we thank her for that beautiful inning by inning digital scoreboard that we'll have on the varsity baseball field. You'll see coming up, I'll try to combine a couple things, you have a Virginia Community Foundation grant where we need you guys to approve that, you all, pardon me, to approve that grant and then it will carry to the Virginia Community Foundation, I hope that you'll consider that, the entire grant is included in the, in your, in your documents, so hopefully that was self-explanatory and we hope that we can achieve that grant from the Virginia Community Foundation for, again with the same as the George Kids, the video scoreboard in the Aquatic Center and a lot of class reunions are coming up, I'll be giving some tours and speaking at those and I've been able to be in contact with the organizers of many of them, so our fundraising, whether, whether you thought it would rest in the summer, it didn't and I look forward to even more happening this year, we've had a fantastic banner first year and I appreciate the opportunity to try to make this explode to even more for this next upcoming year. Questions?
Nothing, just thanks again for the update.
Thanks.
And I am always amazed especially with the donations in honor of Mr. Kersey, like his daughter said, whether it's five dollars or you know thirty thousand and just it's amazing the impact that one person can have on so many lives, that they are stepping forward and donating what they can, just what a testament to, to him and his dedication to his community, so thank you.
Thanks Willie.
Great. Agenda item 6.3, the Summer School 2021 Report.
Hi, I'm Melissa Bone and my counterpart on the Virginia campus, Brian Carey, wasn't able to be here tonight, but I wasn't sure whether we were still going on, so here I am. I was the coordinator for the K through twelve Evlith Gilbert side Summer School Program that is broken up into two different sections, there's the K eight program that is called Targeted Services which is like skills recovery and then the nine through twelve part of the program is called Credit Recovery, did I say targeted services, I meant targeted services if that's not what I said. The nine through twelve portion of it is credit recovery for students that have failed classes and need to recover those credits. We were organized with our K one students in one classroom, our two, three, four classes, students in another classroom and then our fifth and sixth graders in another classroom. Our seventh and eighth graders spent their day alternating between math and reading and then our nine through twelve students, some of them that needed math credit recovery had face-to-face classes with an in-person teacher and then the other students had Odyssey Ware which is an online credit recovery program that was available to them with a teacher in the room with them to gain those credits back for them. Virginia had a similar setup except they had face-to-face English and credit recovery as well based on the needs of the students that we were seeing in each of our buildings and on each of our campuses. As you'll see in the document that I prepared for you, there were a couple of recommendations that Brian and I came out of summer school with and I'm just kind of going to go through those briefly. The first piece is that we strongly recommend that the, that the Summer School Program be held on one campus next year, we had it held on both the Evlith Gilbert and the Virginia campuses for the name, for the sake of equality, but when that really played out, we ended up having, not being able to really fully utilize staff as much as we maybe could have had we been on one campus, like I said, we had second, third and fourth graders in one classroom, that probably was less than ideal and had we been on the same campus, we could have had better efficiency of teaching staff. I know that a number of our teachers on the Evlith Gilbert campus also wanted to participate in more enrichment activities but were uncomfortable with the number of students they had going say from the high school campus all the way to the library and being concerned about behaviors and just managing the number of students they had across that distance. The advantages of having Alcott Park and the lake almost immediately adjacent to the building at St. Parkview would be incredible to have us both on the same campus as well as the opportunity to just get the efficiencies of scale that would happen there, so that was probably our strongest recommendation was that the K twelve program be one on one campus. The second recommendation that we had was that secretarial support would be incredibly helpful, our secretaries were employed through the first two weeks of summer school and after that point, I know that we still got phone calls through to the secretaries because they're our point person throughout the school year and, but they, they were not on campus at that point. Having somebody that would be able to potentially deal with some of the paperwork and/or the attendance issues would have been incredibly helpful and freed up the coordinators to deal with student problems, teacher concerns, programming type issues instead of paperwork and attendance and managing those elements. The last recommendation that we had was that special ed students that are one-to-one with a para professional during the school year should either have a one-to-one para during the summer school program or else they should be moved to the extended school year program at the NLC, one or the other, because having students that were accustomed to having a para during the school year, not have a para during the summer school program was fairly difficult for the teachers to undertake. There were a couple things that I, that came out of the Evlith Gilbert side that may or may not have been echoed on the Virginia side, to the last teacher, everybody said that they would like to see a six-week program rather than a four-week program, a lot of our teachers identified problems like an inability to work in groups amongst our students because they just simply did not have the social skills, the communication skills to be able to work in groups effectively with other students and if they had been able to spend the first like three weeks working on those skills with the students, they might have been able to get farther academically with those students as well. They also felt like a lot of these students were maybe more reluctant students in general, they had some discouragement with, with school in general and it takes a while to make inroads, to make the appropriate relationships with those students to the point where you can be effective with those students. Had they had additional weeks in the summer school program, they felt like they could have used, leveraged those relationships in order to make better academic gains with their students also. Just a few statistics, we had a hundred and twenty-five students enrolled at the end of the school year for summer school on the Evlith Gilbert side and ended up with about a hundred and three regularly attending, I have the breakdowns on that but I'm not going to bore you with that right now. Given the population that we're working with and the reasons that those students were dropping, I'm quite happy with those numbers, that's a pretty solid attendance rate for a group of students that traditionally maybe doesn't attend school quite as regularly. We had twenty students who received credit in face-to-face algebra, twenty-six students who received credit for other classes through the Odyssey Ware program and thirty-three half-credit classes were completed in the Odyssey Ware program, so those are, compared to other years, those are pretty solid numbers for Evlith Gilbert side, we had a good level of participation in the credit recovery programs on Evlith Gilbert side and compared to previous years. Our attendance rate hovered around ninety-one percent, given that we had children that were on vacation for at least a week of every, like one of my classrooms, ninety-one percent was a pretty solid rate and like I said, a lot of these students struggle with attendance during the school year as well, so I'm quite happy with that number also. All of our targeted services teachers, the kindergarten through eighth grade teachers, star tested all of their students in the beginning of this, in the beginning of the summer school program and then star tested them at the end of the summer school program. Overall, of course, gains were made because that, that doesn't surprise us when we have teachers that are engaging with kids, making sure that they have a structured timeframe, reading to them daily, engaging them with math and other learning opportunities and so consistently the numbers, the statistics went up for all the students in both math and reading for all of our K eight students. We did send home progress reports with each student at the end of the summer school program. The Evlith Gilbert side utilized Vine's tutoring program, they have an AmeriCorps volunteer with them and so he came in and did a lot of one-to-one work with some of our, some of our most struggling students and so that was really an added bonus, one of our teachers also had two children that are Vine volunteers and they also came in and worked with our kiddos as well. Ultimately, the biggest benefit that I saw to summer school, as somebody that's worked with our alternative and at-risk population before, is that the kids came out of this feeling more connected to the schools, you walked through the building and the kids were like high-fiving you and saying hi and greeting you and we had a program where our kindergarten and first graders had reading buddies with our fifth and sixth graders and they loved it, they ate it up, they waited for that, our librarian gave us like racks of discarded books for the kids to sort through and the teachers that knew those kids previously said that kid does not like to read and they're rushing down there to get books, like that's amazing, that's fabulous. When the seventh and eighth graders got wind of the fact that the fifth and sixth graders got to read to the kindergarten and first graders, the seventh and eighth graders said can we go do math with them and so they want, they were taking on these leadership roles. The teachers that were seeing these kids said, this is mind-blowing because these are the kids that struggle in our classes and we've all seen them, every teacher in every classroom has always seen that happen, these are the kids that struggle, you put them into a room together and at first you go, what am I doing? And then at the end of the year, they're like, this is amazing because I saw these kids that struggled all year and they stepped up, they stepped into leadership, they had smiles on their faces, they were helping other kids, they were taking pride in their work, those are the types of gains that I wanted to see through summer school and we definitely saw those things and so those were a huge point of pride for our teachers and our students as well. Last of all, there is a lot of thanks due to a lot of people that really went out of their way to support this program, our tech staffs, our lunch staffs, our transportation people and obviously our teachers and our para that were supporting the program, just way, way above and beyond for the program and I'm incredibly grateful for that.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. You have to wait for questions.
You need to stay up there for some questions.
I'm trying to be all class. Does anyone have any questions?
I have none.
I just want to say, I think that, I just want to acknowledge that you are clearly very excited about how far the kids came and I think that probably had a big impact on everything from the teachers on down to the kindergartners and so I just want to, as a board, acknowledge that, I mean your face is lighting up when you're talking.
I love doing it.
Engaged.
It was frustrating and it was awesome.
So, thank you for all that you've done and, and Brian Carey too, so.
And then hopefully next year they walk into the doors in September and be the leaders you never saw.
I hope so.
Or, yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, agenda item 6.4 is Jeff Carey, update on the upcoming sale of uniforms and other school paraphernalia.
Yeah, it should only take me about an hour to get through this.
You've got ten minutes.
I can't even, I can't even get a laugh at this point, all right, so I will be really quick and take questions at the end, but I just want to give the board an update as to how we're progressing with getting rid of some of our excess stuff. Right now, and just, this is a blanket statement, like everybody else, the local auction houses are having a hard time finding people, so they're being very selective as to which auctions they take, they won't just, like I, we have a basement full of excess junk here, they're, they're not interested in spending that amount of time, so that, that's why you'll see on the second one there, we're actually going to be moving that stuff and stuff from other parts of the district into the gym over here and we'll just put a price tag on it and allow the public to pick through it. The first one though, we do have a very good auction of excess shop equipment on DoBit right now, it's doing very well, it ends on August 10th, I think that's going to be a really good one for us, the hockey jerseys, football jerseys and any other uniforms, I'm working with Willie through the Rock Ridge Rising, we're going to be putting that stuff on, on the website there for, for like a silent auction type deal. And then I'm also been, I have also been working with a group from the Virginia Art Association, we're going through the artwork that's in the Roosevelt, trying to determine some value and what's value and what should be donated to historical societies and that kind of stuff, so that kind of stuff will all be going in DoBit as well into September and then that'll bring us into, during the school year, we have a kind of a quick turnaround in the spring for Roosevelt items, from the time the kids go to the time we have to have all that stuff out of the building, about two weeks before they start demo, so right around that time we'll be having another sale similar to what we're doing in Gilbert on August 9th and 10th and we will be advertising that sale in the paper coming up pretty quick as well. Do you have any questions?
Where are you advertising that DoBit auction that's on right now, are you putting a link on Facebook or anything or are you?
Honestly, we're harder than what DoBit has been doing.
Okay, I haven't seen it anywhere.
Certainly can, okay, we can, I can lean on Stacy to put that on, it just opened up like last Friday, so.
Okay. Some of this, you said some of this equipment, like shop equipment, I mean who do we talk to, just, just what kind of shop equipment do we give them that we would, we would not be taking, we couldn't say take it to the school?
The, we have gone through the industrial arts department quite extensively, the, the teachers have and determined what's going into the new school and then, so there's that pile, what's, we're, there's a pile that we're buying new, there's a pile that we're bringing with us, there's a pile that they need for the next couple of years while they're still teaching and then there's another pile which is on DoBit right now that they aren't going to use in the next two years and we're not bringing it with us. Good enough? All right.
I would, I would just make the suggestion that as John said too, that we link this DoBit or anything for sale or any, any sales or garage sales, we link it to the Rock Ridge, you know, school website or just the Facebook, you know, the Facebook page.
We'll get it done tomorrow.
Okay.
We don't have any internet right now, I didn't, I do it now.
I know.
Agenda item 6.5 is Stacy Lampa in the public comment form added to the Rock Ridge website.
Well, like Jeff said, there is no internet, I was going to walk through those here, those at home watching, after we accepted or some changes to policy 206 which is in regards to public comment at a school board meeting, we created a form that's right on our website for you to fill out in advance if you'd like to speak during visitor comment, so I was going to walk you through how to get there, where it's at, but it's on our Rock Ridge Public School, RRPS.org website, it's under the district information, it clearly, there's a, an item that says communicating with the school board, like I said, it's an online form, so you don't have to come in for the form or print a form, fill out your name, address, phone number to be reached if necessary and what you're going to be talking about at the school board, so, and that gets submitted and it goes directly to my email and I can then notify the chair and Dr. Schmidt, so.
Is there a deadline that it must be met before, prior, is it hours before a meeting, days before?
We, in our policy, we said at least twenty-four hours notice, so.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question, 206, that's just for visitor input you said, I mean what you were talking about the form?
Yes.
Just for visitor input?
Yes, so whether it's something on the upcoming agenda or if you want to speak about something that's not on the agenda, fill out that form, yeah.
So that form will not be available at a meeting, so people who just come here can fill out the form and request to speak under visitor input?
Right.
Yes or no? They will have to have the twenty-four hours?
Right.
Correct.
So, if these people, any of them that spoke tonight, did not fill out the form twenty-four hours before?
Did they not?
I don't, I don't know that it's fair to ask Stacy to interpret our policy.
No, I'm making.
Put it together.
I'm asking a question of the board then, I'm not, I'm not drilling Stacy, okay? It's that are we changing then our policy that?
Our policy is what it is and we've approved it and if there's questions as it comes up, we can.
Twenty-four hours notice, that's in the policy.
But we haven't been adhering to that, we've been, we've let people, and I think it's a more open process, to let people, if they come to a meeting and just tell somebody before the board meeting.
Myself and Marie and the, the form thing, from my perspective, goes back a long ways from when Evlith Gilbert was aboard on its own because there was a demand for that. People were confused on what they needed to do and, and I'm, I'm hearing that there might still be some confusion, but that was an effort, that was in an effort to eliminate some of that confusion.
That's the first thing that we said, we have to make, have a form developed.
Yeah.
To make sure that there wouldn't be confusion, that if, if they submit the form twenty-four hours, they'll be on the agenda.
Our old district would be that if anybody came to our meeting, if they wanted to speak, they'd fill the form, the form would then go to the, to the chair, how did, Randy, how did that work? And then they would read it, you know, and that way you could say we get next up, we got this person wants to speak on this item.
I think the reason why we, why we revisited the form is because it was never, it was never, it didn't come to fruition in our district separately.
I think we used it for probably a couple, three meetings and that was it. Then after that, just kind of people just come to meetings.
We have a policy we've approved, let's abide by our policy.
All right, and item 6.6 is.
Now we have the form on the website.
I have another question, there, on the website, there's, there's a, yes, there's a new.
No, she's just telling us that we have the website and we don't need to get it all into that, we're already at eight-thirty in the evening.
Public comment.
Moving on to 6.6.
The public comment, there's a, there's a new guidelines document online too and I was wondering where that came from. I was wondering where that came from.
Noel, 6.6.
I have to remember the school board.
I'm going for the microphone. After listening to all the discussion tonight, and I'm going to add a few things briefly, let me put things in context. You've heard me say this before, that as a school board, you are undergoing things like no other school board in the entire upper Midwest. We've had huge public bond elections. Then there was another one, should we consolidate or should we not? Then we went through, what should we name ourselves? What should the mascot be? What colors are we going to use? Then we went through another whole phase, everybody's worried about contracts. We were just in a meeting with some of you today about teacher contracts. Everybody's worried about contracts. Ask me contracts. What's going to happen with the ask me contracts? And then, oh yeah, let's go ahead and build three new buildings. And oh, by the way, yes, what are we going to do with our older buildings? Most school districts who are building new buildings do not need to concern themselves because they don't have older buildings. They're simply adding on to the school district they already have. That usually happens in higher growth areas. And then, oh, by the way, let's throw COVID on top of it. And oh, by the way, let's throw the controversy about critical race theory on top of it. So, if we were taking a stress test for the school board, you know, you've seen those stress tests, I'm pretty sure we'd be blowing the top off of it. So, we're going to get through all of this and for members of the audience and those who are listening, watching on the camera, these are extraordinary times. These are extraordinary events. We will get through it. We will get through all of these items and come out stronger for our kids on the other side. Couple things to update the board on COVID. We know that we are currently waiting, the rules for COVID have changed from last year. And so, we know that the CDC has come out with a set of guidelines. We are currently waiting to see if the Minnesota Department of Health, Minnesota Department of Education has other things for us to pay attention to. So, we are going to wait for a little bit and see what comes out from the official organizations. Then we'll get together and come up with the COVID plan. What, if anything, are we going to be doing in the schools this year? Because there are some things we simply are going to have to be paying attention to because COVID is still out there and it is real. So, but I want to wait until we get some info from MDE and the Minnesota Department of Health. Second thing to update the board on, and you heard Pat talking about it, the Ewellith buildings. So, what we will do, what I'm going to suggest that we do, we will have the Facilities Committee meet, and I want everyone to know this. So, there's no secret. So, nobody's trying to hide anything to talk about the other Ewellith buildings. So, I'm going to suggest we get a jumpstart on it because we know we're going to have kids moving around from building to building. Eventually, those buildings will be vacant. So, that we start early, list those buildings for sale. So, any developer or group of citizens who wants to take a look has years, a year in advance or so, to start thinking about, how might I use a building? What can I possibly do with it? So, I think that that would be wise for the board to contemplate. But this will come back to the board, but I want to start with the Facilities Committee. But I first want to let everyone else know that that might be a good thing to start thinking about. So that people can have time to think about a plan if they want to take a look at that. And then.
Noel, when you say potential listing, what do you mean by potential? We aren't planning to list them? It's just a potentially, we will list them?
I live in the world of potentials. You haven't actually listed them. So, I can't say that you have not told me to actually list them. So, that's why I put the modifier on top of there.
But in all of our documents, we always said that there would be a period of two years for, for advertising and for trying to sell those buildings. So, that's not potential. We've already decided that we would put them on the market for two years.
That was by the, what Director Sorkin's talking about is the original old agreement between the old Ewellith School Board and the City of Ewellith. I believe that we will reengage the City of Ewellith to see, to talk about that agreement. I believe the circumstances may have changed. So, that's why I'm putting the word potential in there.
I wasn't speaking of the agreement with the City of Ewellith. I was speaking of all the conversation when we had the referendum, before we had the referendum and the plans, the referendum plans, you know, before people voted. That was always put out there as try to sell them for two years after they have been vacated. And so, I'm just, I just was wondering, potential, that means maybe it won't happen. Maybe we won't list them. So, I just wanted to clarify that.
No, I believe it's up to the board. That is an old agreement. Agreements change.
It's not the City of Ewellith agreement I was talking about.
I know, I know. But.
Director Sorkin, it's right. We told everyone.
We did. So, I believe however, there's an advantage to doing this before the kids have vacated the building. There's nothing preventing you from doing this.
Agreed, yeah.
All right. The next one is what I suspect many in the audience are waiting for. I put this on the agenda, critical race theory, because I know it's a topic of conversation everywhere. I know this is not just a here Rock Ridge issue. I know it's an issue in other parts of Minnesota, in other parts of the United States. So, and a lot of people don't know what it is. So, what I'm going to suggest we do in Rock Ridge is to, okay, let's have a reasoned discussion about what it is, what it means with folks. So, we will set up a series of community meetings and invite the public to come in and let's talk about it. Let's talk about what it is, what it isn't, what does it mean, what's really happening. So, I think there's some advantages having a reasonable debate because that's how we learn and grow from one another. Talk about the issue, what actually really is happening. Because there really are no standards in the state of Minnesota that say we are teaching critical race theory. There aren't. We don't have a course that says critical race theory. But, let's talk about it. And so, I'm suggesting we go to the community and let's have a series of community meetings and then talk about it so that we can have some reasoned debate about what it is and where it's going to go. And what it would mean for Rock Ridge Public Schools. Questions from any board members?
Along with the community meetings, this topic fits in very intimately with our curriculum development. In our Curriculum Advisory Committee, we've got statutory language about the development of goals and missions and objectives and certain committees that our school district is supposed to have of whether, you know, we include tenants of something like this in our curriculum. And I don't know how this also fits into the fact that the NLC just hired an inclusion and diversity coordinator and we are a member of the Northland Learning Center. And what does that mean for us? I know you weren't at the meeting and you didn't vote yea or nay, but what does that mean for each individual school district that's part of the NLC? And I think there's eight or nine of them. I'm, I'm hoping that each school district will be, will either buy in or not buy in to this coordinator at $115,000 plus benefits. And I have concerns about all of that, not just the community meetings. That's a good start. I commend you for a good start.
If I'm hours late, I'm going to suggest, if other board members don't have questions, we will talk about this, topics like this, at the community meetings and go from there. But there are always different opinions. I'm clearly hearing some opinions tonight and viewpoints. It's important, I think, to have a reasoned discussion to bring multiple viewpoints and opinions together and talk about it in that type of a format. Any questions from the board about anything I talked about?
Do you need a note of August, Jim?
I would like to do some of these in the month of August, yes.
Sooner the better, I think.
One of the things is today, in reading one of the articles from the Department of Education, this is, social studies is up for its 10-year, once-a-decade standards development for the districts. And as of right now, they're not considering critical race theory. There are a bunch of other things that they're considering, but not critical race theory. That's what the article said. So, you know, maybe as we talk about it with the community and ourselves, you know, we can get more information from what the state is also going to pursue for the social studies standards before we start our curriculum development.
Any questions? Thank you, members of the board.
Thank you. Agenda Item 7 is administration items and 7.1 is Shannon Chris Jeffrey.
I'm Shannon Chris Jeffrey, the Early Childhood Coordinator for Rock Ridge School District. I'm here asking the board to approve a $10,000 grant from the Northland Foundation for our Friday wraparound care. What this will allow will, they'll increase the intensity and length of our preschool day. Most of you probably know that we are running a four-day program. This would be the additional Friday. And what we're looking to do is kind of address the social emotional growth of children and kind of closing a little bit more of that achievement gap, giving those children an extra day with the extra support emotionally, working on some enhanced math activities, working on vocabulary skill building and in doing some more field trips on that specific day. So, the grant will cover the majority of teacher wages, some additional supplies and field trips and transportation. I'm just asking that you approve it.
I'll make a motion to approve Item 7.1.
Support.
Motion by Director Addy, support by Director Anderson. Any additional discussion?
I have a question. The Gears, the Gears money, that's the governor's money, COVID related, right?
Correct. The Northland Foundation received the funds for our area.
Okay, okay, that's how it's coming through.
So, we, so we applied for a $10,000 grant to cover some of our expenses. As you know, budgeting this year is a little bit tight. So, we were trying to work and receive a little bit more money to help with our budgeting.
So, that Gears money is separate from the money that the school district receives? Or is this part of the Gears money that the school district receives?
It would be separate.
Separate, we, in addition to our Gears money?
It would be addition, that we would have to use it for this specific project.
The way I understand it though, if we have to have special approval for the $10,000 for, is this Friday school readiness? That's 7.1.
Yes.
Okay. And we have not approved the spending of other Gears and ESER monies and everything? I just don't know why this one is different, that we have to approve this $10,000.
I'm not positive either, otherwise I would say. I just know that they've already, they've already granted us these funds.
Us, mean the school district?
The school district.
Right, the Gears funds, but particularly for this reason? Or we can use it for certain things and this is?
No, this is specific to this project.
Did you apply for the grant specifically?
Yes.
And so, this is not money that the school district necessarily got in our general fund. It's money that you've applied for through the Northland Foundation.
Correct.
And now we just have a motion to approve and.
Is that 7.1 or does that include 7.2 also?
That is a different grant.
So, we'll do two and three separately?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
They're too specific.
So, any additional discussion on 7.1? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. All right. Are you doing 7.2 as well?
I am not, but I can talk on it, I guess. We also applied for another pre-K to 3 grant for, from the Northland Foundation for our reading progression. And I know that the money was going to be a $1,000 grant. And what it was going to be used for was some training and teacher hours, or in Gillingham, that the school is transferring over to. So, it was just going to provide, to pay for additional hours for teachers to meet and maybe some supplies.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I will make that motion.
I will support.
Motion by Director Lotteger, support by Director Addy. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Agenda Item 7.3 is consider approval of a grant from the Northland Foundation in the amount of $25,000 for the use in training pre-K through 3 teachers in SMART. And we've got.
Maxine.
We've got Maxine Purple. What an introduction. It's for Addy.
I think that's intentional.
You know what? I've been sitting here for two and a half hours thinking this in your classroom. This was torture for me. And I'm sure it is for you. And then also, your sympathetic nervous statement, that flight, fright and bright. I've seen not a lot of calm. Okay, I'm going to tell you what SMART is and why for years I've been trying to get this into our school district. And I have to say that thank you to the combination of Ewellith and Gilbert and Virginia. It's going to happen because we had a curriculum director. What I do, I have my Chance to Grow sticker on. I work for you and I work for them. I just came back from Eau Claire, Wisconsin, where they are, we trained 36 teachers. Their superintendent came and four principals. They're implementing this program into their whole district, 14 schools. It's amazing. So, let me just tell you a little bit about what it is. It's a program, it's a multi-sensory brain program. SMART is stimulating maturity through accelerated readiness training. It's based on frequency, intensity, duration. It's based on your brain and how it operates. And your brain's coming back here from zero to six. From the time you are born and come out of the womb, whether you have, however it came out, you came out, you need to move to learn to get ready to be in a classroom. Your eye movements need to, you need to be able to cross midline. You need to be able, in order to read, to write, and it has to be automatic. If kids are thinking about how they're sitting, and you guys sat pretty good. I was back there going, I'm going to get up. That's why I started with some music, because we use all these things. You need to have this part of your brain, sensory part of your brain fairly developed and on automatic pilot. And what I mean by that is that when you're walking, okay, right now, or sitting in your chair, you're not thinking about it. You're doing it fairly well, but a lot of kids can't do that. So, we have all these techniques that we put into your curriculum and we move them. And why we want, the otherwise, the cortex of your brain, if you know anything about science, your cortex of your brain can only do one thing. If you can't sit still and the teacher's there trying to teach you, you're going to be moving. I tell teachers, you need a rebounder in your classroom, you need a rocking chair. Some of your kids need to rock to calm that sensory system and get it on autopilot so they can listen to the teacher. So, we have a multitude of things. This has been my dream for this area. I have watched the southern part of Minnesota, because I go down to Chance to Grow, which is in northeast Minneapolis, and I watch these schools. And I come back here and I say, let's put this range on the map. We should have this program. And that's where we're coming from. So, because right now, in the Franklin School, I am working with teachers K through 2, sometimes 3. And I've done some pre-K stuff over here, but the time just got, we just don't have enough time. But teachers need to do this in their classroom. They can't depend on me all the time. They need to learn how to do this and put it into your curriculum. And if you want to write this down, if you want to see this before I turn this over to Troy, and I know it's been long, but I could get you up and move and get you feeling better, but I won't, look at SMART in action. It's a little video and it gives you an idea of what can go on in a classroom. And there's research behind this, that if we implement this and do it as a team, it can't be in isolation, meaning can't be in isolation, you're doing your classes. It needs teachers being trained so they know how to do this and fit it right into the classroom. And we're looking at, and here's where we're at.
When I got into my role about a year and a half ago, I went over to Elweth Gilbert and I saw SMART in Action at the Franklin Building. And then I met Maxine and see the passion of what she's been doing. But watching the teachers that, a few teachers that have been trained in SMART and then talking to them about what the reaction from their students is, students are engaged because they're fired up. They're coming, the first time I saw it, I was walking in the classroom, a kindergarten teacher had, before the kids got to her classroom, she had a whole series of things that the kids had to do, of jumping and of moving and of reading letters or reading sight words. And those kids went through the different stations and then they focused in on their groups. They're not sitting, they're not sitting there for 50 minutes or whatever. It was everything that we kind of talked about, is we want our kids engaged in what they're doing. And when you talk to teachers at the Franklin Building, when they get done with Maxine or if they have a teacher that's been trained in SMART, after they do a SMART activity, their students are engaged and they're ready to learn, and that's what we want to see. And so I've had numerous conversations with Maxine. And so for the last year, we've been trying to identify some grant money so we can train our teachers. Our goal, we're talking to the principals and the admin team and Maxine, our goal is to have all of our pre-K through third grade teachers trained in SMART over the next two to three years. So this is the first piece of trying to secure some money. We got the Northland Foundation to step up with $25,000. We're also searching for some other funds to train our teachers. In an ideal world, we would have wanted to implement that this summer, but COVID backed us up on everything that we wanted to do. And so that didn't happen this summer. So our goal is next June to have a training for, on our site and somewhere on our campuses for our K through two teachers, three depending on the size and who signs up to come to it on our site. And then we're partnering with Hill City and Reemer to do pre-K. So we would send our pre-K teachers over to Hill City and Reemer, and they would send some of their teachers over here at the K through two piece. And we're doing the different partnerships and trying to identify just some funding ways that we can do that. So we're not coming to you to say, hey, we want you to pay for all this training for all of our teachers, because we know the money's not there. So we're searching for grant money to do it. This is a first step. And this was a huge one from the Northland Foundation, because we feel that now that we have this one, we can secure a few more. So we just wanted to be here saying if you have any questions about what SMART is. Like I said, if you talk to any teacher that implements SMART, their response to me has always been, students leave, get done with SMART activities or with Maxine, and the kids are engaged and ready to learn, and that's what we're here for.
Sounds like a great idea. I guess my only question would be, is there any commitment financially from?
So we have no commitment, other than we need to do the training. But we're starting to identify other forms of, other funding, revenue, funding sources. So the other thing I threw out too, we've got a regional group that works with EIP, so all the schools in our region. So we, I sit on a group of people that, curriculum coordinators or principals that are definitely interested in sending some of their teachers to. So when it comes down to funding and pulling this off, there's about nine other school districts in our area that would be wanting to participate and send some of their teachers here to. So whether it's EIP or whatever it is, we have, we have now, because of EIP, we have a connection of leaders in the schools to bring these teachers together.
Chairman Chair, I'll make a motion.
Support.
I will give the support to Director Schoburg. Any further discussion?
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Everything you've talked about.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Willie Spelt. Come on back.
Well, I didn't think you'd really want me back.
Well, we want to hear what you say now.
Be careful. As you can see, there's a grant request that I need your approval, that you're saying it's okay that I can go forward with this grant from the Virginia Community Foundation. So I just need a resolution from you, saying it's okay that you support me applying for this grant from the Virginia Community Foundation for $81,000 to help purchase a video scoreboard for the Rock Ridge High School Aquatic Center.
Motion by Director Schoburg, support by Director Lotteger. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
I'm on the Virginia.
Thank you. So we've got six in favor and one abstention. Motion carries. Thank you, Willie.
Thank you very much.
Agenda item 7.5 is approval of the finalized portions of the 2021-2022 Rock Ridge Grade VII through XII handbook.
I'll move this for approval.
Motion by Director Addy.
Correct.
Support by Director Tamaro. Discussion.
I've got, on page 25 of this handbook, it's got the penalties for activities and violations such as drinking, tobacco, drugs. And the first violation, I mean, we all make mistakes. But the penalty, to me, is just a little bit out there. Penalty is three consecutive events. Now, if you're, three contests. So if you're in, I'll use hockey, you missed three games, you still got 15 other games.
21.
20, 21 other games. But if you've missed three games in football, you miss almost the whole half season. So then you go back to the second violation, if the student hasn't learned, and sometimes they don't, they do it the second time. This one is nine weeks. Well, that, again, football, that's the whole season plus the first playoff game. So they missed the whole year. Now, the third violation, I have no problem with, because sooner or later, you got to learn. But I think that it would behoove us as an athletic committee and meet with the ADs and come up with a more equitable system in that we could do this, maybe like John suggested, a percentage. You know, you know, depending upon the number of games that you have. So if you have seven games, you miss two, or you got to, you have to have a penalty. I understand that.
Noel, is there a deadline for approving the handbook?
Yes. The coaches would like whatever it says to be there before the first day of practice.
So if we, if we had this goal to committee and came back on our August 9 meeting, that would be okay?
Yeah, it'd be close, but we can make it work.
Okay, well, there's a...
I believe we can make it work.
I think the football coaches would appreciate a discussion on that.
Well, yeah. But there's other sports too.
Absolutely.
You know, that, you know, say that they've only got 10 or 12 games.
Yeah, absolutely.
Again, you're missing a quarter of your, if you've got 12 and you're missing a quarter of your season, and again, the other activities, so.
But yeah, and also take in consideration or just look into if we're pairing and sharing with other districts, look at their, you know, they might have, you know, one game suspension where they were in the same car, our guy gets three games and this guy only gets one, because he's in...
Not just activities, but I have a, I have a comment that it's not the final version. It says right on the front, they're still being discussed administratively. There are question marks in here that haven't been decided yet. I think this is a preliminary one, but for, for the athletic reasons, for other things in here, I think it's, just like you say, table.
I will withdraw my motion and, and for approving this to, and basically send it back to the, the committee to look into, to fine tune it a little bit better.
All right. Motion rescinded. Agenda item 7.6 is consider the approval of the 2021-2022 ARCC Services Contract. Motion by Director Tamaro, is there support?
Support.
Support by Director Anderson. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion...
I'm on the R Board.
Motion carries six ayes and one abstention.
We've got a recount, there's this, you know, six.
Seven.
Nine.
Nine.
Eight.
Math is hard, late at night. Okay, so eight and one. And then that should, I think I said the wrong number for the other one too.
Yep.
So, okay, thank you. All right. 7.7 is consider the annual long-term facility maintenance application to MDE.
Do we know what that is?
I would certainly, I surely like a special meeting on this. There's so much information and so many numbers, and even the Department of Ed recommends that school boards get real intimately involved in understanding it, in making the decisions of what goes into this.
Let's, let's let Noel kind of go over it.
Well, and I can't even read these numbers and things, so I think it's premature to... Do we have a deadline here?
On the agenda, Director.
Do we have a deadline?
This is a required report by the state of Minnesota. It is an estimate only. You do not have to do what is on the report. The state of Minnesota simply wants you to have an estimate for, for what it is. So you do, if you aren't comfortable with it, you can have the facilities committee, the activities committee, we can have a committee meet, finance committee meet, and take a look at it, and then bring it back to the board. We can also do that, if you're, if you're a little uncomfortable with the numbers say. But it's a required report. We do have to submit it, but it's only an estimate with ballpark numbers. So you're not held to anything you put in this report. So you know what you want us to do.
That may, that may be true, but we are getting this at the 11th hour.
I would entertain a motion at this time.
Don't move that we adopt and consider the long-term facility maintenance application.
Support by, oh, there's a motion by Director Riordan and support by Director Tamaro. Any additional discussion?
Again, this has come to us at the 11th hour. And again, the Department of Ed recommends that not just committees, but full school boards understand what this is, what goes into it, and be part of the decision-making process of, of, of the content of it and the numbers. And again, this is something like I've always advocated, but that a full school board be involved in budget committees of the special meetings or working sessions or something. And so I really don't like things just thrown at you with no input. We had no input in this.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
No.
No. Motion carries eight to one. Under unfinished business, Director Sorkin, you wanted to address something?
Just, well, two things. The Elweth Rec Commission, we are now consolidated and that commission goes on. I think it needs to be reorganized and/or eliminated, or we have to, we have to decide what we want to do with that. A major portion of funding, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, of that commission was through Elweth Gilbert Community Ed money. I don't know what money is paying for it now, you know, if it's now that we're consolidated, but I just think we need to take a look at that whole scenario and the membership. I think Mark Forte has been on the board for whatever. It used to be just school board members, but now he's not a school board member, but he was still on it, just to revisit the bylaws and everything about it. So I'd like that to be in a committee and/or a special meeting.
And we did, just, we did address that in the activities committee, I believe it was last November or December.
Exactly.
In a set-up meeting with Rep. Director Homelon, the Elweth side, and I don't know who coordinates things on the Virginia side, Ryan Silver, and we did get around to that, but I...
We did talk about it.
Yeah, okay.
We should look at it and hopefully be able to coordinate as many of these youth activities as possible. Frankly, I'm aware of why, why Mr. Forte resigned, and it's very unfortunate that that happens in my opinion.
So can you guys get, get that in motion?
We definitely talk with the committee.
Thank you very much. What was your other topic?
The other thing, as I think it was mentioned at one of the last board meetings, is that now that COVID is over and the emergency called by the governor no longer exists or pertains, I think we need to revisit how we, there's direction from the Department of Administration and from MDE about how we conduct our board meetings now, as far as zooming in, not zooming in, not being able to, or defaulting back to the statutory language if somebody wants to attend remotely. There are a whole different set of rules. And then plus the notification that we've given to people, the public, has been changing in, just before our board book. And we need to sort that out and make sure we're doing it properly now that the emergency COVID, whatever, rules and recommendations have, have been lifted.
I do believe it's like board members to chime in remotely. It wasn't like the public, if I remember.
We can look that up. I'm sure that the Minnesota School Board Association has some direction on it.
It's public access is, is referred to and is...
I think it was, it was for public access as well, because it depends on person.
For board members.
No, board members and the public. I just need, we need to revisit that, so.
All right. Agenda item nine, meeting announcements. The next regular meeting will be August 9th here in the Media Center. Agenda item 10 is a closed session to consider strategy for teacher contract negotiation.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
Support.
So motion by Director Addy, support by Director Anderson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We will now adjourn the regular meeting to go into closed session.
I will try to make sure that the powers that be, that, that our next meeting will have some air conditioning.
Thank you. And I think the board is going to go to a separate room here to... Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. All right, we're back in open session. We'll call for adjournment.
I will make that motion.
Support.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Thank you.